This is a Select Board meeting for Monday, October 7th, 2019. On Monday because of the Yom Kippur holiday on Tuesday. We're starting off with the Public Comments section in order to accommodate a number of people's desire to have earlier public comments than were otherwise anticipated. Want to just make a note that, or tell you that we'll also have a second public comment period later on in the meeting if people, you know, want to make comment who aren't here yet. So, do you have a list of... Okay. Steve Vogel. He's not here. Okay. Arthur Conquest. He's not here. Issane Lakey. She's not here. Christopher Jecker. He's not here. Sam Botzford.
I'll wait. You might wait till later.
Okay. Okay, so we'll wait too.
We can take a recess if you want.
I'm happy to wait.
Why don't you just come to a brief recess? Because we can just sit here.
Unless, unless, I'll keep monitoring it. If anybody who comes in, I'll let you know. But why sit here?
Do you want to move announcements up?
Yeah, let's move announcements up. Okay, anyone have announcements?
I've got two announcements. One, I just want to remind folks that there's a short-term rental public forum taking place at seven o'clock tonight down in room 111. And then, second, I continue, and this board continues to look for applications to the Electronic Communication Advisory Committee. This is a committee that was set up now about, I think it was at the May 2018 town meeting, to take a look at how the town communicates with residents with the express purpose of thinking about whether some of the paper, the physical communications could be moved to an online forum. So, I will be chairing that committee. We've had a handful of applications, but in the interest of trying to get a diversity of views and a diversity of individuals, still looking for applications, but we're getting to the point where we're going to have to move on just so we get the work done. So, please submit an application if you're interested in the next week or two, and then we'll appoint the committee and sort of be off to the races. So...
Any other announcements?
Sure.
Just a reminder that on Monday, October 14th, that is in Brookline Indigenous Peoples' Day, and there will be an event that day from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Brookline Coolidge Corner School cafeteria. And we encourage you to come. There'll be food, artists and crafts folks, and an opportunity to learn about the history of indigenous people in Brookline and throughout Massachusetts. Once again, that's next Monday from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Coolidge Corner School.
Any other?
I'll make an announcement. This morning, we had our first meeting of the Kent Street Senior Affordable Housing, RFP, Review Committee. We got three bids, and so we're reviewing those proposals, and I will have an update for the board shortly after that committee conducts its business.
Nancy, anything?
Hi.
Okay, I have an announcement, or a report. My wife and I attended a wonderful fashion show organized by Luna Joachim at the AC Hotel, which is in Brookline at Cleveland Circle. The show was part of the 25th year of Boston's Fashion Week and included Luna and four other fashion designers from the Boston area. Luna uses her fashion shows to raise funds for worthy charitable causes. This year, the show supported Reach Beyond, which was founded in 1981 as the Walt Ham Fatted Women Support Committee by a committed group of volunteers who saw the need for domestic violence services in the western suburbs of Boston and decided to take action. I welcomed the fashion show to Brookline and offered the town's congratulations to Luna and the other participants for this great accomplishment, which is in competition with New York, Miami, and Milan. Luna Joachim has a growing international reputation, has a shop here in Brookline on Washington Street at Cypress called Les Sents. She showed clothes and accessories from her newest collection with her signature retro style of 1950s and 1960s elegant women's clothing interpreted through a contemporary 21st century lens. My wife and I greatly enjoyed the show and the opportunity to meet people from the fashion industry who are outside our usual social circles. Les Sents is a great local business that the town and residents of the community should know about and support. I was introduced to Luna by Carol Rutten, the town's Economic Development Director, who also attended the fashion show along with other community civic leaders. I'm not a big fashion guy, but that was really, really interesting. Anyway, so, I see the audience has arrived. Apparently, people who want to make comments on various topics. So, Steve Vogel, first person. Is Steve Vogel here? Arthur Conquest? Is Arthur Conquest here?
What happened to 7:30?
He can do it at that time. He can do it at that time.
Well, you can come back at 7:30 if you want to wait till then.
Arthur, you're second.
Hi, I'm Steve Vogel of Precinct 5. Thank you for hearing me. I'm here to express my disappointment in the Select Board's decision to fund an appeal for the Mass Civil Service Commission's ruling that Gerald Austin should be rehired with back pay. I believe that this is not in Brookline's best interest. I come tonight to offer my thoughts with the goal of changing your minds. I urge you to reconsider, not because the decision to appeal has some people in Brookline angry, though this is certainly true. I do not believe that the Board is motivated by hostility to Gerald Austin, though some people do wonder. I do believe that you support diversity, inclusion, and are against racial disparities in principle, but this decision is not consistent with those values, and there are people who question your commitment. I do believe that the Board made its decision based on calculations of what is in Brookline's best interest, but I believe you are mistaken. Your decision to appeal the conflicts, to appeal conflicts with our goals for racial justice and doesn't fully recognize the lapses in HR department in this case, among others. It's well-known that Mr. Austin received a voicemail containing a racist slur from his supervisor and was subsequently scapegoated within the department. The Civil Service Commission characterized Brookline's response as arbitrary, capricious, and in violation of Mr. Austin's rights.
That's right. That's right.
The town's actions have greatly harmed Mr. Austin and secondarily, the town's reputation and set back our goals, and set back our goals for a diverse and inclusive Brookline, while dismissing real concerns of residents and employees of color. We need to take responsibility for what Mr. Austin has suffered and make what amends we can. We should be setting an example of what should be done, not what is typically done. Regarding fiduciary responsibilities, I believe we need to prioritize doing the right thing over fiscal self-interest in this case. Moreover, I believe that a good case can be made that appealing this decision will do the town harm with regard to other pending legal actions filed by Mr. Austin and his lawyers. By emphasizing the town's resistance to acknowledging the responsibilities that we bear in this case, we want to feel proud of our town. We want to heal, make amends to Mr. Austin. We want actions that match our values. We want Brookline to become a more, not less diverse, community. Appealing this decision sets us back. I urge you to rescind the appeal, and on this decision, you did not speak in our name.
That's right. 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 Right.
Arthur Conquest?
Rescind or resign. 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 Shame on you. Shame on you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good afternoon. Two things. I was here about two weeks ago, and I talked about the police report and the addendum that was supposedly added to that report. I'm not, I understand, Bernard, that you have a very busy schedule. I sent you an email about a week ago and asking you for that report, and I know that at some point, the report is supposed to come back and be discussed by the Board. Answer your emails. More than a week is more than enough time for you to be responsible to citizens of this community. That's your job, okay? That's why you're there as the chair. I wrote you, come back to me, okay? I would do the same if you wrote me. Does that, do you understand that?
The report and the...
No, I ask you, Bernard, I ask you to send me the report. I didn't, okay, that's what it was.
The report was posted online.
Then come back to me with that. I don't know that. Seriously, I would go to the report online. You could, I deserve that courtesy.
We'll have someone send it to you. Last time I sent you something, it was used in an unfair way, so...
I'm not aware of that, okay? I'm not aware of that.
That's the president of Town Meeting Members Association you're talking to. You used it in an unfair way.
I'm not aware of that. Bring it to my attention, okay, and I'll deal with it, okay?
No, we've already dealt with them. You apologized, and we went on.
Okay, but that was like...
Four years ago, yeah.
Anyway, okay, that's enough. That's enough. That's enough. Okay, Raul, thank you very much. I just want to publicly, I've done it once, and I...
My name is Arthur Wellington Conquest III, and I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 6. On February 23rd, 2016, the then-chair of the Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations Commission read the following statement. "The Board of Selectmen, as an institution of town government, have allowed a culture of institutional racism to exist. As an example, in the past five years, the town has allowed a firefighter who, without dispute, used the N-word to be promoted to a supervisory position. The Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations Commission called upon you, as the elected leaders of this town, to exercise your responsibilities and duties as the Commissioner of the Police and Fire Departments, as elected representatives of this town, to stamp out that culture. This must not be delayed. You must act with expedience. This is a history of this town, there's a history of this town of not taking action on these matters in a timely manner. You must not repeat this history. This is a matter of extreme urgency, which the Board of Selectmen needs to address with action, not words now." Unquote.
And you allowed Town Council to subpoena your own Diversity Commission members and insist that that statement be retract. That's what happens in this town.
A year ago, during fall 2018 town meeting, one of its members stood before that body and said, and I quote, "The Brookline overall culture is not racist." Unquote. This Select Board's decision to appeal the Gerald Austin decision clearly exposes the truth about the state of institutional racism in Brookline, and that substantive change has been similarly ignored by the majority of the leaders of this government. It ignores, it ignored because the vast majority of people here will leave this protest this evening and go on their merry way without really feeling the pain and misery of Gerald Austin. Meanwhile, Gerald Austin will continue to be tortured, scared, humiliated, maligned, and unfairly penalized by the sickness of institutional racism by going now on a decade simply because he refused to be treated as a subhuman being, not only by his supervisor, but also by the members of the Select Board. I do want to make, I do want to make one final comment. The statement made by the three Select Board members as to why they appealed the decision in the Austin case was total racist nonsense. For the umpteenth time, I attended eight out of the 10 days of the Massachusetts Civil Service Commission hearing a little more than a year ago, which yielded the 83-page report by Commissioner Bowman. Members of the Select Board are not telling the truth and the whole story in their statements. The Commission ruled against the town as has Judge Wilkins in their appeal because they have not told the truth about what really happened in the Austin case. Don't believe a single word coming out of their mouths. I was present at the majority of those hearings, and the town officials were caught in lie after lie after lie. That's why the Commission voted to grant Gerald Austin, okay, his case that was before them. Coming here tonight is grandstanding, cheap sensationalism. It is not going to work to remove the carriers and defenders of hate from their positions as leaders of town government. Start getting involved, weekly, daily, monthly, monthly, and not when the red light is on. The only way that we're going to make change is if we get them out of office. We have to remove them. Thank you. Thank you.
Rescind or resign. Rescind or resign. Rescind or resign. Rescind or resign.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Issane Lakey. I'm a resident of Brookline. Thank you to the organizers here for giving us the voice, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I am outraged by the actions of our town officials that prolong a painful history of institutional racism in the United States. A lack of racial justice affects all of our lives, economic, social, environmental, and collective well-being. Restitution is long overdue for Mr. Gerald Austin. We must act from our moral obligation and act now. We must dismantle structural racism in office, in our communities, and all the ways that injustice creeps up. Disciplinary equity in schools, housing, exposure to prolonged stress that creates disparity in health conditions, all of these are examples of institutional racism in our town. But the case with Mr. Gerald Austin doesn't lead us to hire consultants to figure out whether it was racism or not. The case with Mr. Gerald Austin is...
And that's our money, the taxpayer's money, so it is.
The case with Mr. Gerald Austin is clear. And we have an opportunity to address it head-on. The only thing that we need to do is to take action to fix it. I know that racism is a deeply uncomfortable conversation for some of the folks in this room. We have to repair harm done and take responsibility. When we act out of the necessary moral obligation, we can build momentum to dismantle structural racism. This four-to-one decision is not a reflection of our moral values as people of this town. We value human rights. I stand with Gerald Austin. I stand with Select Board Member Raul Hernandez, who refused to be complicit. I will not complicit, be complicit. The people of this town will not be complicit. We must act individually and collectively to ensure the overdue restitution to Mr. Austin and the ways that inequity creeps up everywhere. This is our time, is our opportunity for our town to set a precedence, to set a momentum to dismantle racism in this country. So, I urge you to take action and be on the right side of history.
Christopher Jecker? Christopher Jecker? Okay, Sam Botzford?
I'm not going to talk.
So, I see a couple people looking to, who haven't signed up, looking to speak, or other people willing, wishing to speak?
I signed up through your staff member earlier today.
Okay, you want to speak? Barbara?
Deborah's walking over closer to the mic, so I will do a chat.
I don't know about that. My name is Deborah Brown. I'm from Precinct 1, and when I first heard about the Gerald Austin case, the lawyer in me said, "You know, the truth is somewhere in between. You can split it." And then, I went to a hearing. I went to one of the appeals. You know, I'm a pretty good lawyer. I may not be the best, but I'm a pretty good lawyer. And what I saw this town do was embarrassing. They could not create a cogent argument as to why they would win on appeal. There was nothing that was said that even reasonably led me to believe, and I was a neutral. I did not feel like I had a dog in the fight, having done EEO work in the past. You know, it can go either way. But this is one of those that goes in the direction of, "The town has to settle this." The town has to let it go. I understand that you see this as setting a precedent, that this is part of something that could be carried on in other cases. You know what? If this town behaves in a racist manner, then this town is going to end up paying. And when I, when I look at the kids in this audience, the children, one of the things that I think about is that, and it breaks my heart, to think that we are giving them this burden, this burden of racism, and they don't deserve it. They absolutely don't deserve it. The law is not on the side of this town. We can drag this out all we want. The morality of it is clearly not on the side of this town. And so, finally, I would ask you to put yourself on the side of the people that you claim to represent. On the side of the people you claim to represent. And I'm looking at these children out here. They don't vote, but they have feelings. I'm thinking about the folks in public housing, but every time they see a cop, they shudder in their boots because they know if something goes wrong, the town is not going to stand up for them. This is, this case is also a metaphor for how the town behaves, and we can do better. When I talk to each one of you folks individually, you're good-hearted people, but collectively, collectively, it's racism. It's flawed. It's damaged. And so, I ask you, I implore you to reconsider your decision, not just for the sake of government, but for the sake of everybody in this town that has to deal with the stigma that is only being exacerbated by Select Board's ability to kick the proverbial can down the road. Who is Gerald Austin? A person. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Barbara? Barbara Brown, you want to speak?
Good evening, Select Board. I stand here as a supporter of Gerald Austin's case, of Gerald Austin, and I also stand here as founder and chair of Hidden Brookline, bringing to light the hidden history of slavery and freedom in our town. I gave a walking tour this morning to 20 people. I'm doing about four or five this fall, and I ended it by saying, talking about the present because, yes, slavery has existed here in Brookline, but that is not the present. And I said, "We have got, African-Americans have gotten freedom in this country after 1865 in many states, after 1800 in Massachusetts, but African-Americans have yet to receive full citizenship in this town." That takes more than freedom to walk down the streets. It takes respect, and it takes equality. The things that people, so, but we're fighting this because we had slavery in this town and because we had slavery in every single one of the 13 colonies. That's part of what I talk about on the walking tour. And then, I talk about things of hope. The man who escaped from his, the men who escaped from their slave owners. The families who helped escaping slaves from the South. And it was the escaping slaves, of course, who made the most difference. But that period of slavery isn't quite over yet, and that is the sad thing. What we do collectively matters even more than what we do individually. And you are a collection of important, powerful people in this town, and you represent the town. You have seen today's Boston Globe article. You have seen a public comment, and you have seen the town meeting member vote to apologize. You are making yourselves, unfortunately, look foolish. You are preventing African-Americans from wanting to move to Brookline or work for the town of Brookline. You are undermining the town of Brookline. You are undermining us all when we need to end freedom and have full citizenship here in town. I ask that you reconsider seriously. Thank you.
And who are you?
My name is Maryam Ashkenazia. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 13. I'm going to keep it very short. Jake Howanui said, "Racism is a system, not an event." And you are upholding the system. You have the power to do... You have the power to do something, to dismantle it, and yet you run the other way. I find it disappointing. I find it, there are no words, frankly, for how sad it makes me, how angry it makes me. You have the power to do something. Do it.
Now, before we go on, there are a number of students from the Coolish Corner School who want to speak around this time. So I'll take a few more comments and then give them an opportunity to have their say.
My name is Ann Weaver, and I live in Precinct 11. And I want to ask you something that is related to Gerald Alston topic, but not exactly the same, which is, I spoke with you in, sometime in August, about the secret police app, and you promised that it would be on the agenda in mid-September, and that never happened. Why not? You told me directly, standing here. When is it going to be on the agenda?
It's on the agenda next couple meetings.
When?
Wait. Do we have a date?
You told me mid-September. This is related because it disproportionately affects people of color in this community.
So we found, we've been able to put it on the agenda for October 15.
We'll be here, and I'd like to speak again at that time.
Regina Fralley, town meeting member from Precinct 16. I just attended a full weekend on security studies at my graduate school, the Fletcher School. And whatever the bad decision-making on the international level, I couldn't help but keep thinking that this board, the operation of this town is a classic study of the failures of bureaucracy as an institution. I would just summarize it very simply. One of the great wisdoms of life is when you find yourself deep, deep in a hole, stop digging.
Okay, are there students from the Coolish Corner School who'd like to speak?
Is this the public hearing?
Yes.
My name is Anne Gornwald. I'm one of the co-petitioners of the warrant articles that are going to be presented, and the students really want to speak about the warrant article. Their comments are related to the warrant article, and I think it would be more appropriate if they spoke when the warrant articles were being heard and not during public comment.
Well, no. So we, trying to accommodate different groups, we set the public comment at this time to give people an opportunity to state their opinions. We also moved around the hearing on the three warrant articles to an earlier period to accommodate the students. We're going to have additional public comments later on, as well as additional discussion of the warrant articles at a later point in this meeting. So, you were ready for the hearing on the warrant article, and we're closing now the public comment section. So, you have... So the students would like to speak? They could, you know, start?
I think the students want to speak when it's time for the warrant articles.
It's time for the warrant article.
There's the appeal, and then there's the lawsuit filed in federal court by Gerald Alston that names Select Board members in their personal and professional capacity. You are using this appeal to leverage that lawsuit, and we are paying your legal fees, and I am sick of it, and so are they. You have spent over $300,000 with resident Doug Lewis and his firm, God knows who else. You've added another attorney, full-time, to Town Council's arsenal. And now you've hired Natasha Tidwell and two contemporaries, paying them $625 an hour each, $1,800 an hour, an hour, to cover your own asses because you made mistakes and you created racist acts. And the people are not going to continue to fund you to do that.
So, do we have people who want to speak to, I guess, start out with warrant article 26?
Sure, if I can ask to just make a brief comment before we move to the hearing?
Sure.
Sure. I'll be brief, I promise. Thank you all for taking the time to be out here and for all of your organizing and activity around this issue. I think it's meaningful, it matters, and I think it's the right thing to do. So thank you. What I'll say to my fellow Select Board members is this, that it is, it has become clear since our vote on September 17th that the community is not in support of this appeal. It is clear that the community understands that there is a cost, a financial cost, to accepting this decision. They understand that there, they understand the precedent, they understand all of it. And this is, this is a smart, well-informed community here. They get it. And they still do not want us to proceed in this direction. You know, I've, I've been, sort of myself, and taken some time to hear out many of the folks that have come before us to talk about their issues in the area of Neta, for instance. And we, as a board, are responding, and we're going to be, you know, holding a hearing and meeting and maybe potentially making some changes based on the feedback that we've heard. I find stark discrepancy in the way that we've responded to those concerns brought by a, by, by a group of folks that have been here repeatedly sure and have made their voices heard online sure. But this is another community that is speaking, I think, loud and clear. And I don't, I don't know about you, but I haven't heard a lot of opinions in the other direction than these folks here. You know, I mean, I don't, we have a town meeting that voted overwhelmingly to apologize, a town meeting that gets that wrong was done in the past. You know, at this point, it feels like substituting our judgment for theirs, our judgment for the people in this community. So what I'll say is that these are two separate cases, and right now, we're talking about the Civil Service Commission case. This is a case that we can drop right now, and we can stop fighting this case right now. It only takes, it only takes three votes to do it, and I encourage other board members to consider reopening this vote, reconsidering this vote, and, and hearing the folks that have been here today, the folks that have been emailing and writing online and calling us, and to reconsider that vote. I think it's only right that we at least address it one more time.
Okay, do the students from Coolish Corner School want to speak? This is the beginning of the hearing. So are we going to have a hearing on the Coolish Corner School?
Respect Select Board Member Raul Fernandez.
We are in a hearing for warrant article 26, 27, and 28. Are we going to have this hearing? Yeah. Well, we haven't noticed it, so we're not going to do it.
Not in secret. Too much goes on in secret in this town.
You were willing to vote last week on something that was not on the ballot, and there was no knowledge there, but you were going, moving forward, meaning that it was not necessary for them to see because, well, nobody had made a comment. And it had to do with the...
So I see two students are coming up to the dais. No, we won't, because it's not noticed.
You are now representing the citizens and residents of Brookline. Take that in. Take it in.
Reball. Reball.
I take a vote from your conference and the current elect board.
Yeah. I second that.
On your favor?
Aye!
Mr. Pearlman?
Good evening. So I'm David Pearlman of the school committee, and for warrant article 26, the school committee is one of three petitioners. And we are recommending by a seven-to-zero-to-one vote that the town adopts the name Florida Ruffin Ridley as the new name for the Coolish Corner School. I'd like to hand, I would like to now hand the microphone over to a couple of students who are involved in the lengthy process of over one year that led to this name.
Good evening. My name is Liv Clouter, and I am a student on the renaming committee, also known as the Believers in Change. And I attend to CCS as a fifth grader, but was chosen through the committee in fourth grade. Did you know that we started meeting once a week for an hour and a half since December 2018? And that near the end of our time together last year, we started meeting multiple times a week, not even including the renaming nights, preparing for the public meetings, and presenting to the school committee? We put aside so much of our schedule for the school name. I, myself, remember the days where I would drop my backpack on the floor and spend hours on the computer, researching, making docs, perfecting slides, creating scripts, and so much more. We worked so hard because, as students that go to CCS and as kids on the committee, it mattered. I remember learning about the committee, dreaming about being on it, because it's my school name we are changing, my school history being made, and I wanted to be a part of changing it. I wanted to be able to have an impact on my school's name, on my school's future. At the end of all of our hard work, we chose four names, including Florita Ruffin Ridley. Floritas stood out to the committee for many reasons. First, the Believers in Change wanted a name that did, that said the opposite to what Edward Devotion did. Edward Devotion owned a slave and had a slave in his will. He stole that person's life. Since before we know it, slaves have been looked over. Even after the Civil War, slaves are slaves. They didn't matter. But now we've decided that that slave mattered, that that slave mattered, that Edward Devotion's slave mattered, that that person was a something, a someone, and a person just like you and me. And our committee chose to honor that slave. So that's why Florita Ruffin Ridley fits with that. She collected and preserved black stories. She also is a great role model for the students of CCS. She follows a motto and shows us that we can have courage, even when you are talked down or underestimated, or when you feel that nobody is like you. Because that's what she did. We considered all the submitted names respectfully and equally. Because when you really come down to it, it is who that person is as a school name, how the students will look up to it, what impact it will have on the community. And to those of you who are rooting for Ethel Weiss, I used to buy lollipops from her store. I liked her and reconsidered her, but she just didn't make her final list. Florita was our choice. The principals set up the process, but this is my handiwork, my words, just like those names. They were ours, not theirs. So now, I just want you to think about how you would feel to put so much work into picking Florita, just to have it be picked another name and your time gone to waste. I just want to remind you one more time of the work, the effort, the passion, the heart we put into the school name, which I want to be named after Florita Ruffin Ridley. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Heath Colbert-Lloyd, another one of the Believers in Change. I think there may still be some confusion about the process. We were asked to help our community name the school after the town voted to rename it. The criteria we were given just led us to the names of people who provided restorative justice. Although the other two people are wonderful people, they didn't, in my opinion, represent the choices which would restore lost justice.
Any other speakers?
Is there an IT person here that can help me with my PowerPoint presentation? Or should I just bag the PowerPoint and just cut to the chase? I can bag it.
Why don't you just start?
Okay. My name is Deborah Brown. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct One. You guys made me cry. When we started, my second slide is actually a picture of the young people that participated in the naming process. And, you know, what they did was incredible. They, they took basically what the adults were managing to botch and, and worked with and through a process that, that was not only inclusive, but, but inspiring. You know, I did not know, Florita Ruffin Ridley, regardless of what people say, was not my first choice. I learned about Florita Ruffin Ridley through this process. I wanted a woman named Freeman. I wanted W.E.B. Du Bois. You know, I wanted Frederick Douglass. And guess what? The Ruffin Ridley family knew those people. They were part of the same system. The difference was that she's a woman. And she managed to rise above the racism, the sexism, when she was younger, the ageism, to become what we, as Brookline people, should be proud of. So very quickly, I'm going to run through her accomplishments. I'm, I'm, because I'll start crying if I think about these young people too much, or cry more. You know, she was one of those critical people that led to the founding of the NAACP. You know, Mary McLeod Bethune, W.E.B. Du Bois, but her name doesn't get mentioned. And maybe it's because Brookline forgot who she was. Her home, for over 20 years. Her kids went to high school here. Those cards, you know, some of those pictures I took, and I just walked around, and some of the places still exist. But we can remember our history. She and her family were the first African-American family to buy a home in Brookline. She helped found the second Unitarian church in Brookline, which, for those who don't know, is Temple Sinai. She helped publish and edit a newspaper called Women's Era, and that was the first African-American publication for African-American women. She founded the Society for the Collection of Negro Folklore in 1890, and the Society of the Descendants of Early New England Negroes in the 1920s. And if you're looking for her materials, you can use Radcliffe Library, you can go to Howard University where there's a repository. She contributed to the Journal of Negro History, the Boston Globe, and other periodicals. She was a... the Boston Globe, and other periodicals. She was a player in the Harlem Renaissance. She helped to found a group that later became the National Association of Colored Women's Clubs, and that fed into the NAACP. And she was a suffragist and she was also an anti- lynching advocate. Now, I might say, she's in New England and she's an anti-lynching advocate. It was not safe anywhere to say that you were opposed to lynching. And she did it. She, she got out there and she fought. And so, I just want to say that as a town, we got here starting in 2006, when we found out through Hidden Brookline that Edward Devotion had enslaved a person. In 2012, you know, we started issuing proclamations about our legacy of slavery. And 2017, we agreed to comply with the Gare Principles, you know, which talks about eliminating racism and promoting equity. And then in 2018, we actually passed the warrant article. Well, and that gets us up to here. And one of the things that I've, I've heard over and over again is that this, this was a closed and a blind process. I can tell you that there were no less than, than eight meetings sponsored by school committee. And, and that's only after there were public meetings for people to come and learn about what the process could look like. And I participated, whether it was over in farmer's market, whether it was in, you know, youth programs, Ann Greenwald did, Barbara Brown. I've got the materials in my car. Where we just went around and we talked to people and we asked the questions. And we didn't get much pushback. This piece of restorative justice was part of the initial conversation that you all may remember when Ann and I proposed renaming the Coolidge Corner School. We have to give our children and our community a sense of safety. People have to feel that they can trust us. And we have to be able to collaborate around things and issues that are difficult. We have to give a voice to the voiceless. We as a system have to provide pure support for people that feel like no one cares. And we have to do it in an inclusive and a culturally and historically sensitive way. Lastly, we have to, and we've heard this, we have to promote a process of change. And that is basically what restorative justice is. These young people started the work. And somebody's going to tell you, I'm sure, that, that I had my thumb on them. And God is my witness, you know, I care for them too much to even begin to think about being that kind of a manipulative person. They did the work. They did the work themselves and they showed up with 16 names. I don't know how they reviewed all those names, but they did it. And then they got it down to 16 names. And then they got it down to four names. And I saw their work. And I sat there and I went to all but one meeting because I was having chest pain. And I talked to each and every child. And they understood the substance of the work that they had done. Lastly, I was at the farmer's market last week and I ran into a six-year-old. And I, and I had, I had one of those little cards. And I, and I asked her dad if I could give it to her. And he said, sure. And you know what she said to me? That's Florida Ruffin Ridley. She said, she said she didn't vote for her. She voted for the Metco woman. And her dad's standing there looking and he's like, this is my, this is my baby. But she knew the finalists. This was, this was a six-year-old. And it's not the first time I've, I've had that experience with children from the Coolidge Corner School. They got it. They get it. And I'm hoping that we all can take a lesson from them and understand just how important this is. Lastly, I do want to give a shout out to the parents that put in so much time and effort picking up their kids late, making sure that their dinner was ready a little later than it otherwise would have been, and not pressing them about what was going on. So thank you for hearing me out, but most importantly, thank you for your time.
Pearlman?
I would also like to add for some context that we have 11 school buildings in Brookline. Of those 11, only one of them is named after a woman and none of them after a person of color. This is a tremendous opportunity for us to name a school building after someone in the interests of restorative justice. This is not just some random great minority, someone with deep local connections. She was a resident in Brookline for over 20 years. It is believed that she was the first African-American homeowner in Brookline. She lived right over on Kent Street. She sent her children to the Lawrence School. So there's definitely a very strong local connection in addition to her national accomplishments. And the school committee was very clear in its vote of seven, zero to one in favor of Ms. Ridley. Most of us would have liked to be here today, but we have another meeting downstairs. Four of our members are down there. I see, well, Moscato was, Moscato's here. So we do have very robust support for this. Also, just in terms of process, we're going to hear from two other petitioners for warrant articles regarding the name. And I would just note that the school committee had a process that lasted for over a year. These other two you're going to hear from, there was not that same type of process. And in fact, Mr. Rutman attended one of the school committee meetings and spoke in favor of Ethel Weiss, and we welcomed his input as we welcome input for anyone, whether we agree with what it is they're advocating for or not. But that was a part of our process. And in closing, I would also note that the naming committee's bylaws, bylaw number 10, actually states that the naming committee shall not recommend a name that the school committee has not voted for. So this was also in keeping with the naming committee.
Okay, thank you. So in terms of warrant articles, 27 and 28 are proponents of those articles here. And, and we'd like to, once, okay, we're on 27 and 28 now.
Are you closing comments on the warrant pieces?
Okay. Okay, we have a, we have a couple hearings following this, but, you know, if you have the students here, why don't you give them an opportunity to speak?
27?
Oh, no, let, let, let the kids do 26, and I'll call you right after that. Remember, we're running late.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I want to-
They're having a lot of time. We expect they have the same time.
My name is Erica Anderson and Liv Clouder, who you heard from earlier, is my daughter. And she didn't, I will not take too much of your time, but I do want to point out a few points about the process and about the kids' work. First of all, Liv did not exaggerate the time and the commitment and the effort that these kids put into this process. In fact, I can guarantee that nobody else who you will hear from tonight on the other warrant articles put that same amount of time and effort and dedication into choosing a name for the school. I urge you to not ignore that opportunity to honor a resident of Brookline who has been forgotten for over 150 years that these kids have brought to your attention. I understand that the decision to change the school's name was not without controversy and it brought a steady stream of complaints. That's to be expected because change is hard and no process is perfect. But I am certain that whatever process was chosen to bring names before you tonight was going to be complained about, and nobody would find that it was done perfectly. But what the change in the name of the school does is it gives us a unique opportunity, as these kids recognized, to help change the future of their school and this town, a future that honors the lives of people of color. And I think tonight we've seen that there's a lot of work that we have to do in that arena. And this is one of the first steps that we can take. I commend these kids' commitment to the task, to Ms. Buller's leadership and Mr. Oler's leadership, too. And let me take one moment to say, as a parent who saw my child come in every single week after giving her time to this, these kids weren't brainwashed. They weren't told what to do. They were not led down a path to a single outcome. They were independent thinkers and they were leaders. And I think that it would behoove all of us to follow their leadership. At one of the public meetings that they had on the finalists' names, there were four of them that were available for all public to come and talk to these kids. And I watched my daughter and the other 12 or does, other 12 or so kids on the committee interact with individuals of the public. And often those interactions were not very respectful. And these kids handled them with a grace and a poise that is much better than many of us as adults can do and have done. And I was commenting with one of the other fathers about how impressed we were with how these kids were handling this process. And he said to me, I wish that they named, renamed a building in this town every single year because this is what education should be. This is how these kids should be learning. And despite all of the negative comments, the horrible feedback that many people have given to these kids and to the families and to the school, to the administration and the school committee, I don't disagree with him. Because it's an excellent teaching moment, not just for the kids on the committee, but for the entire school. And it's a teachable moment for us as a town. For the past several years, there has been a debate about race in this town. And yet, when these kids emphasize the importance of honoring people of color and honoring women, telling stories that have long been untold, people complained that this process was unfair, that it was undemocratic. They complained it was racist, that the finalists did not represent our town. People complained that naming a school after a person of color doesn't right Edward Devotion's wrong and it doesn't right the racial wrongs in this town. And they're absolutely right. It doesn't right the wrongs of slavery. Nothing can. And it doesn't remedy the racial issues in this town. But it is a start. And I urge you that honoring Floritas Ruffin Ridley, a woman who you heard from Ms. Brown, dedicated her life to teaching, preserving black culture and history, fighting for women's rights, fighting for the rights of minorities, and was one of the first black property owners in Brookline and the second black teacher in our area, in Boston, is a step in the right direction. I say that we follow this young, this generation of young leaders that we have before you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to take, are you Mr. Rutman? Yes, Mr. Rutman, on warrant article 26, 27 now?
Hi, two of us, a parent and I'd like to speak for a moment. I'd like to thank-
We're going to defer the rest of the hearing on warrant article 26 till later on so that we can get in the warrant articles 27 and 28 at this early session. And that will be continued until later on, too. We have a number of hearings coming up that are, we're actually late on now. So I want to, you know, have some control over the town. So Mr. Rutman?
There will be a, there will be a time this evening for us to speak. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I am Larry Rutman, Chairman Green, and members Franco, Heller, Hamilton, and Fernandez. I greet you. And also Administrator Kleckner. I acknowledge you. I want to say, this is my associate in the Devotion to Ethel group. And Joyce Judge Ricky has been a member of the school committee in the past for nine years and also very active in the Devotion School. For like, I don't want to say anything to upset you, Joyce. 30 years or something like that? And I first went to the Devotion, well, let me say that this whole thing is not racial to me. I didn't, I didn't really know what was going on. I was so busy with my stuff. And I, I really found out that the school wasn't going to be named after Ethel Weiss in June. And I never imagined that at this age I'd get into a political fight. But here I am, because I think it's really the best fight of my life, to tell you the truth. This isn't racial to me for the simple reason that I just, it just seemed to me that I couldn't understand why it wouldn't be Ethel Weiss because she's about the only person that it seemed to me that should be considered. How naive for an old guy like me. I got into it and I found out that there's all this racial stuff. Now, this has been a very interesting night to me because one, I can imagine being very much in favor of, of you folks voting not to take the appeal. But I can also imagine being very much for Ethel Weiss because she's the person she is. I think the argument made by all those people who were very vociferous can make a lot of sense to a person. Makes a lot of sense to me. But I'm not getting into that. But it's not racial to me at all. And I got into this only because, well, I just told you, because I found out about it and said, you know, boy, I mean, Ethel was such an unbelievable person. Some of you know, I know that Mrs. Heller, knew her well and loved her. So that, and also let me say that, you know, a big issue has always been made about the time put in on this. These kids put in a lot of time. And there's no doubt about that. But that's not the criterion. I mean, the criterion of an issue is its merit. And I'm going to tell you a little about the merit of this one. What, the comments I'm going to make now are all in the warrant article that I wrote and filed. And I think that it's short because it's simple. Because it's, she was such a fantastic person. She was there for 76 years in that little store. 76 years. I met her the year she opened the store in 1939, when I was eight years old. And the last time I talked to Ethel was in 2015, the year that she passed. That 76 years is an awful long time. It's the time from Lincoln's Gettysburg Address to the beginning of Second World War, 1939. Also the year that Ted Williams made his debut with the Red Subs. And so, I think that, that's a long time. And she began in her twenties and she died when she was 101 years old. And you know, in that year, in 2015, she became deathly ill, went to the hospital, and came out from the hospital and went back to the store until the day, practically until the day she died. Okay, so that's fine, but that doesn't make her, I'm not telling you that's why you should vote for her. Her life was that school. And it's, I mean, she didn't make any money from the store. You know, give me a break. I mean, selling five and 10 cent candy and stuff like that. She wasn't there for the money. She was there for the kids. That's what she wanted to do. And that's why she lived her life that way. And so, her life was that school. And the school was totally indebted to her. I think all the principals of that school would agree. And because she set up scholarships for the kids, book awards, she set up rules for living. And she, the kids loved her. Practically all of those thousands and thousands, tens of thousands of kids over that 76-year period went through that store. This lady was endowed with a singular spirit of moral uprightness, helpfulness, and natural wisdom. I'll get into that a little more. But she was. She was exceptional. If you can find anybody who said a bad word about Ethel Weiss or some fact in her life that makes her somebody that did something reprehensible or bad or even questionable, you can't find it. It doesn't exist. You had a person who could well have become famous, who in the guise of a plain person, did miracles. Do you realize that? I'm, I'm not sure because of, of the way this is going. And she shared those qualities, as I say, with these thousands of kids over that enormous span of time. So it's my position that no person, no matter how famous or honored, can match what she did at the Devotion School. And really, she is the person that should be named as the, that the school should be named after. She was as a sui generis person. Now, there are lawyers here who know that phrase, one of a kind. She was one of a kind. And that sets her off from all the others who are, you know, she's, she's a person different in kind than all of those other people. So I'm wondering whether this story can be matched anyplace in the whole world ever by any school. That's a, I'm asking a serious question. That's a, I'm asking a serious question. I don't find any such record existing anyplace else. Now, did she influence me? Yeah. Nineteen thirty-nine, I came to her in nineteen ninety-nine, and I said, you know, I'm thinking of getting out of law a little bit and writing, and, you know, I'd like to do an interview with you. And we did, and that started me off. Whether I would have gone in that direction, I don't know, but I did. And we got a letter today, Joyce brought to my attention, from a gentleman by the name of Roger Hornstein, who lives out in California now. And I have to read you a little bit of his letter because he says it better than ever I could. "Ethel was part of the devotion school educational experience. I owe her a lot." He's, by the way, he's a very eminent psychologist out there. "I owe her a lot. I'm not sure I would have been valedictorian at Brookline High School without her help. And I don't think I'd have the optimistic outlook I have about old age," he's about eighty, "without her example." And then the last thing he said, I'll skip the middle part because we don't have time. "When I returned to Irving's," that was the name of the store, "in my seventies and found her still running the business, still glowing with health and good humor, it was an example of what's possible for any of us at any age. Renaming devotion school and Ethel Weiss would be the truest, most honest expression of what an elementary school needs to be." Yeah, he said it in a, in a really convincing way. And so, you know, it, maybe another person will speak to the process. The process was deeply flawed, faulty, and really corrupt. I mean, those hundred names, we, we don't hear about how a hundred names got reduced to fifteen with fourteen of them people of color and then reduced to four, all people of color. Now, you know, I'm the last person in the world who has anything bad to say about people of color. I have lots of friends of color. Some of them are here tonight. But that's not the issue. As I said at the beginning, it's who is the best person? We, we can't undo any guilt we may have about things, bad things that have happened to black people by a process that excludes all people, other people, white people, Jewish people, Irish people, God knows, everybody except black people. That doesn't make sense. It just does not make sense. You can't fight racism with racism. So I think I want to introduce Joyce and let her say a few words.
Thanks. I'm Joyce Judge Wiki, town meeting member, precinct nine. I was on the school committee for nine years. I was a devotion parent from nineteen sixty-nine to nineteen ninety-one and a devote, devotion volunteer until, I don't know, many years after the last one was out. I knew a lot of kids. I heard from a lot of kids. Tonight, we've heard a lot about racism. And I'm going to tell you a story. I was a school bus monitor on a special ed bilingual bus. Four of my boys, two black, two Latino-black biracial, were making fun of a Chinese businessman in their neighborhood. I was pretty close with these kids, and I went and sat with them, and I said, "Do you know you're being racist?" And they said, "No, he's not black, he's just Chinese." And I said, "When you denigrate, or exclude, or make fun of, or bully someone because of their race, that's racism, even if they're white." There is not a single school in the state of Massachusetts named for a Jew.
Public school.
Public school. Thank you, Barbara. There is not a single public school in the state of Massachusetts named for a Jew. Given the number of Jewish residents in Brookline, we'd like a representation of who we are named for the school. Ethel, JFK, and Bob Spurber got more nominations than the final, the fifteen, the final fifteen got cumulatively. And yet, even with the support from the community who offered those names, they were not considered. And they were white. You want to talk about racism? Racism is excluding people even if they're white, if that's why you excluded them. Ethel taught first graders. She went in every year and had, had a whole little curriculum that she went in and taught about being a good person, about being honest, about managing money. And she repeated that in the store and helped them learn how to do their money. Didn't let them cut in line, didn't let them bully each other. Ethel even tried to work with the sticky fingers. First, she would say to them, "If you don't respect me enough not to steal from me, then respect yourself enough not to steal." Worked with some of them, didn't work with others. And when push come to shove, there were kids that she didn't let back in the store. Did she call the police? No. Did she call the school? No. Did she call the parents, if she knew the parents? No. She dealt with them herself in an honorable way. When we name a school, our school, it should be after someone who made an effort for our children, thousands of children. Ethel went to every graduation until she physically could not. The first boy who received the Ethel Weiss Book Award for Good Citizenship and Kindness was a boy who lived on Egmont Street, who had limited abilities, and came from a horrific I saw him last year. He has a good job, he's married, he has two children, he owns a home. And when he saw me, he was so happy to see me. I hadn't seen him in a long time. This was a couple of years ago, and he is now forty-five. So I haven't seen him in a while. Gave me a great big hug, and I told him how proud I was at him. That book award made him decide on his own that when he went to Brookline High, he was not going to get a certificate of completion, which many of our special ed kids get. He was going to get a diploma. And he worked really hard. And he turned to many of us that he knew from devotion, including Ethel, for advice, for counsel. He graduated with a diploma, and he went to Johnson &amp; Wales and got himself a profession. Had he not received that book award, and this is what he told me, he would have just thought he was another kid from the projects who was, his word, retarded. She changed that life. She changed thousands of lives. We want to name our school not after a wonderful woman who was a symbol, who did great things out there. We want to name this school after someone who had something to do with the school, who had something to do with our neighborhood, who had something to do with our children. Again, not a public school in the state of Massachusetts named after a Jew. Racism is racism, even if you're white.
Thank you. Mr. Selwyn, would you like to speak on Warren Article twenty-eight? And again, we'll continue this hearing later on in the program.
Good evening. My name is Lee Selwyn. I'm a town meeting member from precinct thirteen. I'm also a member of the advisory committee. But I have sponsored and petitioned Article twenty-eight in proposing to name the school for Robert Spurber. Robert Spurber, as you all know, was a superintendent of schools here in Brookline for eighteen years, and when he retired, went on to become nationally known as a leader in public education. He was on the faculty of the Boston College, Boston University School of Education. Among his accomplishments, while a superintendent, was to help initiate the Medco program, which has benefited perhaps ten thousand children of color in the Boston, from, who live in the city of Boston, enabling them to go to suburban schools. He was one of the initiators of the Economic Development Advisory Board here in Brookline, which was in, his intent there was to try to provide financial stability and, and resources for our school system in the wake of Prop Two and a Half. So I don't even think I need to spend a lot of time telling you about Spurber because you all know who he is. But I do want to spend some time talking about how we are, how we got to where we are. There were a couple of suggestions made during the discussion on Article twenty-six that the, the petitioners of Articles twenty-seven, twenty-eight were latecomers to the process. There was a letter that I received on Thursday from the chairman of the school committee responding to my open meeting law complaint, which I know you've received copies of. One of the things she accuses me of in, in her letter is not having even participated in the public process when nominations were open. And it turns out, she's wrong. In fact, I submitted the nomination of Robert Spurber at three twenty-two PM on January twenty-first of this year. And how do I know that? Because I, I looked at a, an Excel file that I downloaded from the school committee's website, the school department's website. The, so I want to talk a little bit about that nomination process because I think it's important to understand. And I've, I've spent a lot of time in the past couple of months trying to understand how this process worked. I've, I've submitted an extensive public records request to the school committee. They have been stonewalling me and responding. I've only gotten about perhaps twenty or twenty-five percent of what I expected. They're way behind the, the legal deadline for responding, and, and I have to deal with that, but that's a separate issue. So we had this, this public process. Between December tenth and last year, in January twenty-third, the public was invited to submit nominations for consideration in, in the renaming process. And approximately two hundred and fifty people submitted nominations. Some, some submitted multiple nominations, but around two hundred and fifty people participated. And there were roughly about, it's not really clear how many because there were some sort of misspelled names that got counted multiple times, but roughly speaking, a little over a hundred names were submitted. The name receiving the most nominations was John F. Kennedy. The second highest was Ethel Weiss. Now, what's interesting about those two, plus Robert Spurber, is that all three of those nominees had direct connection to the devotion school. JFK was born and lived in the devotion neighborhood, a few blocks away, and he went to the devotion school, I understand, through the third grade. So he was a student at this school. There are a zillion things in this country named after John F. Kennedy, such as a freeway in Chicago that connects Chicago to the airport, you know, and Kennedy Airport in New York. This happens to be something that he has a direct linkage to. Ethel Weiss, you've already heard about. I don't need to repeat that. And Spurber was a highly regarded leader in public education and here in Brookline in particular. The, the naming committee, in fact, has a long tradition of requiring that a connection be established between a name and the building or other facility that would bear that name. The three people I mentioned, and perhaps there are others, had direct connections to this school. Not a single one of the fifteen names that were considered by the students had any specific connection to this school. Now, how did we get from this hundred and some odd names that were nominated, submitted in nomination by the, by the public through what, what the school committee has described, and Ms. Schneider Oldham described in her letter to me, as a highly open process? Well, it turns out that there's some entity called the Coolidge Corner School Access and Equity Team. And the school, Coolidge Corner School Access and Equity Team, based on some documentation that was produced to me as a result of my public records request, screened names before they were submitted to the kids. In fact, I saw no documentation that suggested that the kids were given an opportunity to actually do any specific research on any of those screened-out names. We have a lot of documentation showing the work that the kids did on the fifteen names that they were provided, but no documentation whatsoever that they looked, even looked at any of the other names. Now, they may have looked at the other names, but it's not really clear how, what sort of consideration they got. There's certainly no evidence that they actually did any affirmative studying of them. Now, what would you think if a screening body within the school department decided that only people of a specific ethnicity, such as Jewish or Irish or Asian or, you know, you pick it, should be given consideration? I think you'd probably find that unacceptable. Why is it acceptable for them to pick, to decide that they're going to screen out names that happen not to be black? You know, this trans, can be translated a couple of different ways. Jews need not apply, Asians need not apply, Latinos need not apply, Irish need not apply. You've heard these things before, and yet, that's exactly what we're seeing in this process. Now, there was a suggestion that, that by one of the speakers, the, the petitioner for Article twenty-six, that you would be hearing from somebody that suggested that she had her finger on the scale. And I guess she was referring to me, so I won't disappoint. I don't, I don't hold anything against these kids. I'm sure they work very hard. But if they were only given these fifteen names, then they were basically excluded from the true selection process. Now, they met with certain outsiders during the course of what was described as a training exercise for them, including basically the two petitioners of the original Devo, devotion renaming article, the head of Hidden Brookline, and the person in charge of diversity and inclusion in the Brookline school system. They did not, to the best of, of the information that I've been able to gather, have any opportunity to meet with proponents of other names. By the time these meetings were taking place, people had been submitting names. They didn't meet with anybody who supported Ethel Weiss. They didn't meet with anybody who supported JFK. They didn't meet with anybody who supported Robert Spurber. They didn't meet with anybody who supported anybody other than the names that were finally provided to them. So to suggest that this is a kid-driven process, a student-driven process, I think is, is an exaggeration. The, the notion that this was some sort of learning exercise, in fact, in her response to my open meeting request, the, the chair of the, of the school committee suggests that this was actually an educational or learning process in civics, and therefore they're not subject to the open meeting law. Well, I'm not going to get into- Well, I'm not going to get into the legal matter of that. I'll deal with that separately. But as a civics lesson, to only hear one side of the issue, of an issue that is clearly controversial, I don't know what kind of, how that qualifies as an educational experience. I have expressed, and in the documents that I sent you, that in my view, these kids were exploited and manipulated. Now, the parents may disagree with that, but if eighty-some-odd names, who happened, many of, the most of which happened to be not of color, were never provided to these kids for consideration, then I don't really see how it qualifies that these kids were engaged in a process that was in any sense fair and open. There was a predetermination that this school was going to be named for a person of color, specifically, a person of African-American ethnicity, and making that public process, inviting people to put in names without suggesting that that was going to be a criteria, is essentially a sham. And I really hope that you don't support that kind of activity. Now, one of the responses to my public meeting, to my open meeting law complaint, was it wasn't timely filed. And I think it was because of reasons that I can provide, but again, I don't want to get into that. But separate and apart from whether my complaint can be legally pursued, the fact is that the activity that I've described did take place, that it took place behind closed doors, that bodies that clearly qualify as public bodies were not ever afforded public, open meeting law training, were not subject to open meeting law requirements, their meetings were never posted, their meetings were never open to the public, they never heard from a balanced cross-section of opinion, as you do here, and as you have given people the opportunity to do here. We heard from one of the members of the school committee just a little while ago that there was a requirement by the naming committee that they can only approve a name that was first approved by the school committee. Well, if that's the case, then I hope the naming committee simply doesn't approve any name. Because if they're constrained to approve the name that was a result of this highly flawed and highly biased predetermined process, I think that would be most unfortunate. What I think should happen, and I will, at the appropriate time, offer a motion to this effect, is that Articles 26, 27, and 28 should all be deferred. They should be, not no action, but deferred to a committee, a moderator's committee, I believe, would be most appropriate, that can establish a truly open process where names of all ethnicities can be given consideration. If the school department wants to get kids involved, that's fine, as long as they participate, as long as they operate, subject to the open meeting law, and as long as they are given an opportunity to fairly consider all of the nominations that are submitted. How can you, how can you allow the, an entity to, such as the school committee, to publicly assert that they are pursuing an open process when they and their appointees exclude the vast majority of the names that were submitted on ethnic and racial grounds? I think it's very unfortunate. This whole process is unfortunate. It needs to be deferred. It needs not, there's no rush to do this. And I urge you to not, if you're not prepared to endorse Ethel Weiss or Robert Spurber, or JFK, which are the three names that have specific connection to this school, then by all means, agree to defer this process and to create a much fairer and more balanced naming process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. So, I'm going to close this part of the hearing. We can, pardon me?
I think there's one person that wanted to speak.
We're running really late.
I know, but there are other people that would like to speak, and we would like to speak at a time when it's relevant to what you are hearing, as opposed to after a noise waiver.
Yes, a noise waiver by law, hearing that people have come to for a 6:30 hearing, I believe, it's now 7:10. I want to give them some consideration also.
Well, we were talking 5:30, and I've been here since 5:30.
You changed it.
You kept changing everything, so nobody knew when to show up.
We tried to accommodate a variety of people and a variety of interests. Just goes to show that no good deed goes unpunished. So, we're going to continue this until after the bylaw hearings, or bylaw waiver hearings, at which point you can, you know, discuss the warrant articles then. Thank you. So...
Excuse me, my point of, approximately, what time would you think that would be?
My guess is about 8:15. Does that make, make sense?
Does it make sense? No.
Pardon me?
You're asking me if it makes sense?
Well, no, I'm asking the board member.
It's been three hours.
Yeah.
I mean, respectfully, you said that after the two other petitioners had made their case for their names, that people who were speaking in favor of Article 26 could then speak again, so...
No, I think I, what I intended to say was that after the three warrant articles have been heard, we will defer the, the hearing until after we have the noise bylaw hearings. And I think just those two things, at which point, we'll reopen the hearing on the warrant articles and some other warrant articles. So, I'm trying to juggle.
I get it.
Everyone's interest here. I don't know who's here for the noise bylaw, but they've been waiting for quite a while, and I want to give some consideration to them, just like I went out of our way to give consideration to the people who want to talk about, speak on Gerald Alston and the warrant articles. We postponed an executive session in order to accommodate that. So, you know, please bear with me as we try to sort of juggle everyone's interests and everyone's concerns. So...
I mean, we were only three people, and I promised we could be brief.
Okay. I want to do this noise bylaw, and hopefully, that will go fast, so. I would suggest, my, my guess is, I have no idea how long this is going to go. My guess is probably 8:15, but I would suggest staying around if you can, or coming back a little earlier than that. Or leave us your phone number, we'll call you. Okay, who's here for the noise bylaw waiver?
It's the one, it's the Skanska.
Okay.
Ray is here.
Right, okay.
Hi, are there two noise bylaw waivers on?
Yes, there are.
So, I'm here for the one on Route 9. I don't know what you're saying.
That's the second one.
Okay.
First one is Skanska at the high school. Okay.
Good evening. My name's Mike Pugh. I'm with Skanska USA Building. I'm the project manager for the Cypress Street project of a high school. I'm here to discuss two noise bylaw waivers. There's one waiver, two locations. One's at the Cypress Street project, one is at the 115 Greeno project. The agenda only lists one area of the UAB. The waiver we submitted actually is for three locations.
Sorry.
Sorry. Is that better? Okay, so the application that we submitted is actually for three locations. One is the Unified Arts Building parking lot, one is the corner of Cypress Street and Tappan, and the third is the 115 Greeno demolition project. We're asking for an extension to work from 7:00 AM to 8:30 AM, both Saturday and Sunday, October 12th and 13th, and then from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, same days, Saturday and Sunday, October 12th and 13th. We are asking for this as everything related to Cypress Street is being driven by the MBTA. Those are the times we are allowed to work adjacent to their tracks, within their zone of influence. At the 115 Greeno Street, the demolition is a request of the town of Brookline Building Department to do as much demolition as possible when the kids are not in the adjacent buildings. So, we are trying to take advantage of the weekend when the kids are not in session.
Any, anything else? It's pretty straightforward.
Yes, we'd also like to do a quick update of what was asked of us from last time, so...
Hi, my name is Peter.
Can we remind people what last time was? I believe it was a request for a two-year waiver.
Yes, at our, at our last presentation, we had initially requested a two-year duration for the bylaw exemption. We're here tonight requesting two specific days, just to provide you a quick update from the work that we've done since the last meeting and what you may expect at future meetings. Mike and I have done much collaboration with the MBTA, along with Ray Masek, and we've developed all of the information that we had promised to bring to you. It's in its final stages of review, and we anticipate that at either the next, our next opportunity to be in front of the select board, we'll be asking for a longer duration, two to three months, with the supplemental information that we committed to providing, being a calendar and more specific dates for a longer duration of time, along with the construction activities and types of equipment that would be utilized. So, tonight, we're just here for those two days, the 12th and 13th, and we plan to be back here shortly.
Okay. So, your later request will be for a two-month period, but you're not going to be working on each day of those two months?
Absolutely not, only when the MBTA requires us.
We'll get a schedule of when you'll be working.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
My name's George Cole. I'm a member of the Building Commission. I'm also a co-chair of the High School Expansion Committee. Later this evening, you're going to be asked to sign certain documents relating to granting of easements for air rights over the MBTA. This is a very big deal. It is the result of two years of enormous effort on the part of the town, its council, the committee, and the MBTA, and represents a very important precedent for the Commonwealth. Entailed in that air rights is our ability to build a new high school over the Green Line, and that requires us to work when the MBTA is not running trains. The MBTA is currently repairing the tracks on the Riverside branch, and they will be closing the MBTA Riverside branch for, from now until the new year, for the weekend. Our ability to piggyback on that divert, on those diversions saves the town literally a quarter million dollars per diverted weekend. If, when we have to pay for the diversions to build the high school over the T, we will be subject to between $200,000 and $250,000 per weekend diversion. That's why it's very important for the select board to give this crew, the Skanska crew, and our project team the flexibility to work when we can, in concert with the T. It saves real money, money that will go into educational and programmatic spaces for the high school. If we have to spend it for the diversions, we will. We prefer not to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add? So, we've also, the MBTA has also noticed that we may not be working on certain of their diversion weekends and may request others. And they've expressed their dismay about that because it also affects the ridership. If the trains cannot run on the D line, we're talking about the D line now, because we have to do work on the line and there's no MBTA work done, it affects people who use the D line. So, it's a very delicate balance here in terms of the people who are directly affected, and there's no question that it's annoying. It's really, you know, and disruptive. But there's also disruption to the commuters, there's disruption to the people in Brookline, and there's the implication for the project and the tax issues for the Commonwealth, for the, for the town. We, if we don't take advantage of these diversion weekends, it costs us much more, and it comes out of the hide of the educational program at the high school. So, it is critical that we are able to work on these weekends and, you know, I'm, I know that Skanska has asked, in essence, for work hours between 7:00 AM and 8:30 PM, I believe, or is it nine o'clock?
Nine.
Yeah, until nine for this coming weekend.
So, I mean, it's not just that they're going to work in the morning, a little bit in the morning, a little bit in the, in the evening. It's going to be working all day. But there are times when the MBTA is closed in the middle of the night, and, you know, it would, we have to get used to the idea that it's going to be closed anyway. If we can piggyback on those days as well, that would be, that could be a significant advantage for the project and for the town, really, in terms of these other factors that I've mentioned. So, I hope you'll look favorably on this. I know it's a pain in the neck for the neighborhood. I understand that. I'm happy to buy anybody earplugs who, who is going to be affected, if that, if that would help, but it really is critical.
As I understand, what we're talking about is taking down some trees. So, it's the buzzsaw noise that, and although related to the MBTA air rights because it's over the tracks, that's going to be a separate issue that we're dealing with later on.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
It's a public hearing.
Yeah. So, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone from the public who'd like to ask questions, state comments, please I don't see anyone. No one? Okay. Let's move on. Any further questions from the board? Are we ready to vote on this?
How well noticed was this to potential abutters?
So, we blanketed the, all of the abutters. We had a flyer on their, on their mailboxes. We had an email list of all, the Brinkton Road? Brinkton Road residents. So, obviously, fairly well.
We did that.
We did that last Thursday.
Well, I'll make one more comment about that. Last week, we did have a, an expansion advisory committee in which we discussed this issue with the neighbors, and they asked for better notice. And so, they in turn furnished us with emails of everyone in the neighborhood, and so, Mike and Peter are using those emails to give people notice. In addition, they put flyers on. Now, I don't know where you are with the issue of a bulletin board. They asked for that.
Mr. Chairman, Ray Masek, Building Department, regarding the bulletin board, it's being delivered from Amazon, and we expected it to be up today. We're also working on what's called a construction advisory button, and what that is, is that'll be tied into the school website, and Skanska will provide information, construction advisories. And the advisories will be when we're requesting a noise bylaw waiver, when it gets approved, the type of equipment that we're going to be using, and the type of noise that's going to happen. Tied to that advisory will also be, will show some scheduling, as well as...
We'll have a three-week look ahead and a three-month look ahead.
Three-week and a three-month look ahead. So, we're trying to, so we're going to use the emails, we're going to have the bulletin board, we're going to have the construction advisory. We're going to really start to communicate. And last Friday, in fact, we just sent out one of our regular monthlies to the parents and to the Brinkton neighborhood.
But we also intend to keep up the flyers, as I understand it, as well.
Of course.
And the noise, do you have any idea how many decibels of noise, I assume they're, they're sounds?
Yeah, so the early parts of the morning, the 7:00 AM, we primarily setting up equipment. So, we'll be setting up a crane. It'll be smaller construction equipment. There'll be excavators. The noisiest part of the activity will be the trees, will be the chippers. Those will happen more midday, late afternoon. And at night, honestly, we hope to be just kind of cleaning up in mostly hand brooms and maybe a sweeper or something like that, but the noisiest part of the activities would be middle of the day.
And I guess unfortunately, subsequent days of warp will probably be louder, have louder noise levels.
Yes.
So, I mean, you should just, I don't know how you warn people like that, but, you know, cutting the trees now may be the best part of the process, the less, you know, less difficult part, so. Any other questions? Okay. I'm of approval, and then, any other questions from the audience? No? Okay. I'm of approval of the question of approving a noise bylaw waiver. I move approval of the question of approving a noise bylaw waiver for Skanska USA Building for work to be formed at the Unified Arts Building of the high school on October 12 and October 13, 2019. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So the next one, question of approving a noise bylaw waiver from Pat's Contracting Inc. for work to be formed at 1198 through 1210 Boylston Street on the following dates, October 9 and 10, October 15, 16, 17, and October 21, 2019.
Good evening. I am Stephanie Boudreaux here for the owner of the property. We're looking for a noise bylaw waiver for the property, excuse me, at 1198 1220 Boylston Street, right on Route 9, near Hammond Street, to fix a pipe. We have the contractor here who's going to be doing the work. The waiver seeks six days of waiver from the noise bylaws from the hours of 9:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. We've worked with the Department of Traffic, and they've suggested we do it in the evening because of how busy that area is, and we don't, I don't think we think the work is going to take that long, but that's what we're looking for, just in case.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, this is, Route 9 is a state road, so I think, you know, you're just coming for the noise bylaw, we don't do any permitting for that.
That's right.
Just, you know, for your, for audiences' information. Any questions from the board?
I have a question. Which, what construction vehicles are you going to be using?
I think Pat can address that, he is, this is the contractor.
Yes, a mini excavator we're using on the street.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
A mini excavator we'll be using on the street, and also a small dump truck, and the, it's like a breakdown lane, we'll be in that lane because the water main is in the gutter line, so it's not out on the street, so primary.
We've been through a number of these bylaw waivers, and one of the things that residents complain about most is the backup lights on the trucks, and I know that, you know, by, for safety reasons, you can't turn those off, but I would ask that you be aware of that and try to minimize the amount of that kind of noise, because somehow that's more piercing.
Yeah, the backup alarms, yeah, we'll, we'll take care of that.
Okay. And as I understand, the reason for this replacement is that water is leaking into people's, into your basement and other homeowners' basements?
Yes, the water main is leaking right at the service going into the building, has been for the last year, so waiting for approvals to get it done.
Yeah, I've been through that, so I empathize with you. Any other questions?
Did you have to notify a butters?
Yes.
Yes, and we did do that.
Okay.
Mr. Russell, do you have anything to say?
Yes.
Dan?
For the record, Fred Russell, Water and Sewer Director. I spoke with, with Pat earlier, and I actually spoke with one of his foremen this morning. They're asking for six nights, and first off, let me explain that, it's, it's not an issue of traffic control, because the water main is basically in the gutter line, and it would be a matter of just blocking off a couple of parking spaces, so they wouldn't have to block off. The, the issue is with the discontinuation of the water, so the water has to get shut down for a portion of their job, not for the entire job. Basically, they have to disconnect the existing water services, which requires shutting off the water main, which could affect the urgent care facility and a daycare. I'm of the belief that that has to be done at night, and that should take maybe one night or two. The new connections that they're proposing can be doing, done during the day. We had a similar situation at 1234, which is right down the street, same thing, they did the disconnection of the existing services at night, which required shutdown, and they did the connection, the new connections during the day. So it's my recommendation that the noise ordinance be granted for two nights, not six, because a good portion of this work can be done during the day.
Which nights are you suggesting?
I'm sorry?
Which nights are you suggesting?
Whichever of the first two nights that they would like to see.
Wednesday and Thursday.
I'm, whatever nights works for them, I'm fine with.
I'd like to ask another question.
Okay. Ms. Heller?
So I think, I think what would be ideal is the 17th and the 21st.
Okay, so you're, you're willing to adjust the days to the 17th and 21st?
If that's, if that's all the contractor will need, then that's all we'll need, yes.
Okay, is that all the contractor needs? Yeah, okay. Ms. Heller?
Another question just occurred to me. I recently, on my street, the town's water department came to work on the main or connection to a house, I'm not sure which, and they started quite early in the morning with a jackhammer, and that's also incredibly piercing, I can assure you, activity, and I'm hoping that you can be aware of that and do that in the early part of the evening or the later part, you know, I don't know what, what kind of activity that is, but I do know that it's really, really very disturbing.
Yeah. Okay, they will take that into consideration and do everything they can to be considerate of.
Okay, thank you.
This is a public hearing, are there any comments from the public? Any other comments from the board?
Thank you for willing to scale it back to two nights.
And good luck, and I hope you get a dry basement.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, I move approval of the noise bylaw waiver request from Pat's Contracting Inc. for work to be performed at 1198 through 1210 Boylston on the following dates. We agreed October 17 and October 21. So all in favor, Ms., Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you. Well, again, I was wrong. That only took 20 minutes. Now that they've left. You want, you want to do the public comment section, or?
Whatever section is appropriate, I'd like to comment on Article 26.
And what's, what's the topic?
Article 26.
Yeah, we have, pardon? We're going to have the hearing continued, or we continue the hearing until later. I guess we can take your comment now, if you want, but, you know, the hearing will reopen probably half an hour or so.
I'd like to give my comment now, I'm supposed to be in a meeting of the eighth graders in the school, so if I may, thank you so much. I thank you, select board members, good evening also to the community members, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I was listening very intently to some of the other speakers, I know one of them who supported a different article said that the person for whom the school is named should be someone who made an effort for our children. I'm Suzanne Shendy, I'm a community member and I'm a resident of Precinct 8, and I have a family that is black, Latino, Caribbean, American, all sorts of multiracial strains mixed into our family, and I'd like to posit that Florida Ruffin Ridley is somebody who has done something for our children, and the type of work she did made any of our children or any of us who are women part of that effort that she had to allow us to vote, and to ensure that our children of color are not being lynched or weren't lynched earlier. All these efforts on her part contributed to the well-being of our children directly now. I'm a mother of one of the people, one of the youngsters who was in the believers in change, and if anybody has any question about whether these young youngsters were manipulated, the fact that I'm here and he's not shows that a 14-year-old, and a 14-year-old young black man is not going to be manipulated, and I couldn't even convince him to come here today after the hostility that he faced when he went to the advisory, advisory meeting the other week. I am trying to understand, because I'm really baffled, what message we're trying to send to our children if they came forward when the town meeting passed this article, tasked them with the research, and they researched all of the names that were brought, over 100, because, do you know how hard it is to get a response from children, "How was your day? What'd you do at school?" But I did, like, "So what are these meetings like? What are you doing?" And I can't remember the exact number, but they split into smaller groups and they researched every single name that had been nominated. They didn't research the 16 finalists, they were there for over 50 meetings, not counting the public times when he had to go and sit down and cover for other people who weren't there, he was on the radio, and he's like any other teen. He'd rather be out playing sports, or with his friends, or flirting, or even trying to do his homework, because we're on Brookline, like, that's the kind of environment we've chosen. Our family, our black Latino family, has the audacity to think that we too can be part of Brookline and that we're welcome here, but I want to know, hello, I've waited a very long time, I'd like to be listened to, thank you very much, I'd like to know what I should tell him when he says, "Mom, we did all the work, we showed up, we sacrificed time, we would have liked to have been doing other things," and it wasn't even the one that he most wanted to see come forward as a finalist, but he respected the process. Why can't we, as adults, respect the process? I don't know what to tell him when he says, "This woman, she wasn't the one I wanted, but she's amazing, and she had something to do with education, and she had something to do with Brookline, and she's fought for women's rights to vote, all women, all women of all races, she fought against lynching, like, is there no person of color who is good enough that they, Brookline School could be named after them?" I do not know what to tell him, so I'd like to ask anybody to help me know how I should answer my son when he asks me these things, when he is embodying what we hope for of the future, that he's, and he is embodying, and Liv, and Heath, and all the other kids who are too intimidated now to come, the civic engagement that we want to rescue this country and this world, and we can sit back and look at Greta Thunberg, and none of us know her, and she's not bothering us, but the children in our own community who are doing an equally brave job, we won't listen to them. How can we do that to them? Please, let's live up to our own ideals. I have a friend from Medford whose school is named Columbus, and they're considering a name change too, and when she hears of what our children and our school leadership and our town has achieved, she thinks of it as something to model her effort after. So let us please live up to, like, the best of Brookline and be able to highlight this as something that we are doing to make this a better place in light of past injustices. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. So our agenda is a little jumbled tonight, again, trying to accommodate the needs and interests of many people, so I guess we're at a public comment section, is that what you wanted, or?
I don't, I don't know what I want anymore.
Well, you don't expect me to know.
No, I'm only kidding, I know, I know what I want. No, I just, I didn't know, is this the appropriate time, because I didn't realize Suzanne was speaking, I didn't know we'd have gone back to Article 26, but you're just saying this is public comment?
Well, public comment, but if you want to speak on Article 26, go right ahead. I mean, the problem is, is that I overestimated the time it'll take for this two noise bylaw waivers.
Well, that's encouraging, right? Something got done quickly.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Lauren Bernard, Precinct 8 Town Meeting Member and parent at the Coolidge Corner For those of you, who aren't many probably at this point, who are at the Fall, Spring Town Meeting, I started, I, I was involved in the Warren article about the Walder-Durgan Project, and I started out what I said by a quote for my son, which was, "Change is hard, I want everything to stay the same." He said that many times, and when the vote came up at Town Meeting last year, a lot of people felt that way, a lot of people in the former devotion community felt that way, a lot of people in the neighborhood felt that way, but as I said a few months ago, and I firmly believe this, and I don't think I'm alone in believing this, the only way we can shape change is to be a part of that process. And that is, was the charge given to the school committee. The school committee received a charge from the select board, and that charge was that the, then the school would be named the Coolidge Corner School in an interim period until a new name could be chosen, and that process was spelled out, was this process that the school committee was going to form a committee, study names, et cetera, and that's exactly what happened. And many of you also know that I part ways many times with what the school committee says and does, but not on this occasion. So therefore, the process by which Florida Ruffin Ridley's name was chosen was precisely the process that you charged the school committee, who then charged the school principal with, and this committee of children who got together and studied and did a, quite an amazing job. So I just want to set the record straight that, that the process that chose this name was the only one that followed the process that was spelled out, with the naming committee, with the school committee and all of that, so I just, I want that on record, that this was the only authentic process, and I think Town Meeting members need to understand that as well. I'm going to be brief, because there's been a lot said about this, but the implication that the kids did not consider all the names that were put forth isn't true, and there's someone in this room who can say that a lot better than I can, and she wants to make a few remarks after me, and that is the principal of the Coolidge Corner School, Ms. Jennifer Buller. What I'd like to say in conclusion, really, is that, sorry, I lost my page, is that by voting our school to be named Florida Ruffin Ridley is in no way to disparage the memory of Robert Spurber or disparage the memory of Ethel Weiss, and I knew them both, and I did not, I did not know them well, but I knew them both, and I think they would both be horrified right now that their names were being put in competition with a name that was through a process that kids participated so heavily and so authentically in. I had the pleasure of meeting Bob Spurber at the time when, I guess it was about six, seven years ago, when there was a resolution or a Warren article, and Mariah can correct me, about using the old Lincoln School only as swing space, and what he said to me was very memorable, he said, "Listen to the kids, they know what they're talking about." So I urge you to think about that. I understand Mr. Selwyn's devotion to, no pun intended, to Mr. Spurber, Dr. Spurber, but I don't think that either Ethel Weiss or Robert Spurber would like this process at all, in the sense that their names were being put in competition with a name that came out of a process that kids had initiated and worked so hard on, kids from that school. And just to remind everyone that Mr. Selwyn also alleged that there's no connection between Ms. Ridley's name and the Coolidge Corner School formerly known as the Devotion School, and I would, I would go back to, to what I just said, is that the connection is precisely the students there. The connection is undeniable, the connection is one in the present, the connection is very real. So while Ms. Ridley maybe did not send her kids to the former devotion school, all of her achievements have been listed here by people who know of her legacy better than I do, but I would argue that her connection, by virtue of the process by which her name was chosen, makes, makes it a stronger connection than any of the others. And in conclusion, I'll leave you with one thought, you know, yet what again, one of the inscrutable quotations from my son, when I asked him this time, what do you think, you know, because he read in the tab that there were these other names and that Florida Ruffin Ridley's name might not be chosen, I said, "Well, what do you think about that, Luke?" And he said, "Mom, it makes me think that the adults don't want the kids to learn. Is that the message we want to send?" Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Jen Buller, I am the principal of the Coolidge Corner School. I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak, I want to thank you for the kindness that you showed our students this, earlier this evening, and allowing them to tell their story as well. I did just, I wanted to listen and hear all of the different things that people were thinking about in the community, and I wasn't planning to speak, but after hearing a couple of different things, I really did just kind of want to talk through what the process looked like, since I have close knowledge about what that did look like. The students were given every single name that anybody submitted, there was no vetting out of, or weeding out, or thinning out of any of the nominations, they were given all of them, and they knew how many times that each name was nominated and by whom. I, oftentimes when people ask me what my role in the process was, I say that, you know, I was just there to provide snacks, to make sure that the kids were well-fed as they worked in the afternoon, because it really was their process that was being driven, that they drove. And so they had every single name and they, it was really a student who, when they were, they talked a lot about JFK and whether or not the school should be named after JFK. And that was something that they, all of the students, because they were all third, through up, had remembered the time that they spent studying about JFK when they were in third grade. And so it was a memory that they had. It was something that they knew was important to the school. And it was a student in the group that said, you know, a lot of places are named after JFK and a lot of people know JFK's story, but not a lot of people know these other people's stories. And that then became the crux of their goal, was to really find the stories that people didn't know and lift those up, for the town to learn about all of the different prominent people that lived in the town or had a connection to the town somehow. And so I want to be clear that the students did have all the names. They carefully considered them and weighed a lot of information going forward. And then in terms of the way that the public interacted with the process, not only did the public have the opportunity to submit names, but they also had the opportunity to come to all of the renaming nights that the students themselves held, well into the evening hours, that they would be there. And they would take questions from people about the process. They would take questions from people about who the different finalists were and how they arrived there. So people were given the opportunity to interact with the group and then give their feedback. And during those renaming nights, they received over 250 pieces of written feedback and they read every single one of them. I watched them pour through every single piece of feedback, and not all of them were nice, but they read all of them. And they took every piece into consideration. And that's how they got to the four, was that they heard an overwhelming desire from the community that it needed to be someone who had a connection to Brookline. And so that's why some of the other names from the 15 left, and then you ended up with your four finalists who did have some connection, whether it was that they were a resident in the town, or in the case of Ruth Batson, was part of the Metco movement and, and how Metco is so important to our community. And so I wanted to share that as well, that there were many opportunities where the students invited the public to weigh in and talk to them about what they were hoping for, and they really listened to that feedback and made their decisions based on the public comment. So the, the idea that the public didn't have a chance to give their opinion just, is not true. And so I wanted you to know that. And I just wanted you to know too, just how proud we are as a school of the work that the students did and the, the work of our whole school community. Every single student who went to our school last year was able to participate in not only understanding that the student group presented the four finalists to all of the students in a kindergarten through second grade community meeting, a third through fifth grade community meeting, and a sixth through eighth grade community meeting. I went to the pre-K to read them a social story about how the renaming happened and was going on. And then every student in the school voted. And then we shared that information. It wasn't to say that this was the deciding name, but we shared the information about the vote with the school committee to help them as they decided which of the four names were going to be happening. So I did want to share that information with you, just so that you had a picture of what was happening at the school. And if you have any other questions, as the process goes forward, I'm happy to answer and clarify those for you. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you. Do you want to speak?
My name is Beth Cates. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 9, and I'm former PTO President of the Edward Devotion School. And I just want to offer an option that's a bit of an olive branch, because this process, we've heard from people who've said how deeply it's flawed, the whole process, the renaming process. If I talk to my son, who graduated from the Edward Devotion School, his generation isn't exactly happy about the whole thing. I don't think that many people were not included in the process. They may live in other cities. They may be in college. So it, it's a really problematic as to the renaming of the school. And I want to thank all of the students that put so much effort into researching all of these great names. And, but somebody said that the school should be named for the best person. Well, I think there's a lot of best people. And so I'm offering an amendment to Town Meeting, to Article 26, that would say, we should name the school for something that's neutral. We should keep it the Cool, Coolidge Corner School. And we take the opportunity to name different areas of the school for all of these great people that these students have researched and come up with. And to be honest with you, the auditorium, the auditorium at the Edward Devotion School was named for Robert Spurber. And maybe it should take that, it should continue to have that name. And, you know, maybe you name the library for Ethel Weiss because she, or one of the libraries, because she had this great, you know, devotion to reading and the students and fostering reading at the school. And maybe, you know, Florida Ruffin Ridley gets something else, or Roland Hayes for the music, you know, room, or something like that. You have all these opportunities to name different significant areas within the school for these very, very special people. And that's why I'm going to offer this amendment to keep the name of the school, the Coolidge Corner School. And I realize that if all of these names get voted down, it will remain that, but I think that the name of the school should be chosen and not by default. Thank you.
Boy, I think this Town Meeting's going to be very exciting. The idea of naming different parts of the school for different people irrespective of who is selected as a school's name, I think is an idea that I hope the school committee considers. For example, one of the students who attended the devotion school, who really benefited from it in huge ways, was Rosemary Kennedy. Okay? And what, think of the story that that can tell about what the school did for someone with significant intellectual issues. And of course, her story became very tragic after she left. But the story that can be tell, told about inclusion, diversity, and many other things from naming a part of the school for someone like her. So, I mean, just my opinion, I think, you know, that idea of naming different parts for different people is, is a good, is a good idea. That's just my opinion. Any other, oh, I'm sorry, any other comments from the audience? I guess we're, we're at the, we're back to the hearing on Articles 26, 27, and 28. Okay, saying no further comments, I'm going to close the hearing. Yeah. A reminder that we offered public comment for people who wanted to come back. I said 8:15 is probably when. So what I want to do now is to go to item 10B on our agenda, which is approving construction related to Brookline High School. And after that, if people want to speak on various issues under public comment section, they can do that, or even the Warren Articles 26 through 28.
Just, just to be clear, we're coming back to 26 through 28, littering the agenda?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Well, we're unlikely to vote on it anyway.
Why?
We never vote the first time around unless it's a fairly minor Warren article.
We give people an opportunity to send in comments and before we vote, we actually vote, after the hearing, some people want to write emails to us, and so we take those into account as part of the public process.
And we want to digest what we've listened to the community saying before we.
When would you vote, Hunter?
Well, it'll be at some time in the future. We have a lot of Warren articles to go through. So this talk, the question of approving executing following documents related to the construction of Brookline High School, and there are a lot of documents here, so why don't you just start?
Certainly. I'm Associate Town Counsel Jonathan Simpson, and I've been working with, with the project manager Ray Masick, as well as our special counsel Doug McGarrett, on negotiating these agreements with the MBTA necessary to build and ultimately occupy the space in and around the Brookline Hills T Station for the high school expansion annex, mostly located at 111 Cypress Street. I'm happy to report that it, while it has taken a while, and taken a little longer than we'd originally planned, we do, we have reached final versions of the documents that you see before you. They are in a slightly different package than you have been, just, that had been described at several of our earlier meetings. At some of the earlier meetings, one of the documents that was going to, that was intended to be signed was called an improvements agreement. We've moved away from that now because the design has advanced far enough that we can capture it sufficiently in a license for entry. So the first document, sort of, that'll be important in terms of timing, will be the license of, license for entry that'll allow our contractor, Skanska, as well as all the subs, onsite to, to build the, the high school annex. That, once that's there, finished, we move into the next stage of the arrangement, which is the easement agreement. This is the cross easement arrangement that we've set up with the MBTA, where they will give us not just air rights over the tracks, but also surface rights on the land bordering the tracks that the T owns, that'll allow us, the, the school to exist there and us to use it for our high school. But also, they are getting easements over some town property as we are relocating the Brookline Hills T Station and rebuilding it for them. This will allow that to both occupy some town land and also they'll be allowed to cross over it as necessary. There'll be certain, some, as you may know, some of the parking will be, will be rearranged onsite. Certain sta, spaces will be designated for the T, although the, the town will also retain a number of spaces for the high school. The next document that you have is, is new. It's the assignment of the permits. This is essentially an agreement that the T has developed as an additional security for the arrangement. We will hold virtually all the permits on the, under, under the arrangement. The, these are both local permits through the, that we would, anyone building in the town applies through the building department and its various inspectors, plumbing, wiring, sheet metal, but also cer, certain permits obtained through the state. We will, we would be holding those, but we will assign them to the T such that if the relationship falls, falls apart, the T is able to step in, take ownership of those permits, and complete as much work as it needs to, to, to get it where itself, get itself where it needs to be. The flip side of this, in a way, is the escrow agreement, which is the fourth document you'll be signing today. The escrow agreement is essentially where between us, the MBTA, and Sharon and Logent, who will be acting as the escrow agent, where the easement agreement, of course, won't go into effect until the property is, the project is completed as described. But essentially, holding the easement agreement in escrow allows us the security of not building the T its new station and everything, and then not getting the easements we need to actually use the, the property in the, in the way it's intended. So we will sign the escrow, the easement agreement, and then it will go into escrow until we've completed the project. And then, which time we'll, we'll get it out, we'll record it, and we will own the easements as described. And finally, there is a, there's actually a 1976 parking agreement that your predecessors signed with the MBTA, related to certain town, town parking lots that border MBTA's, the MBTA stations. Because all of the parking for the Brookline Hills T Station is taken care of in the easement agreement, there is no need for the Brookline Hills T Station to be mentioned in that 1976 agreement. It is still in effect, however, so we do need to amend it. And you will be signing an agreement, amending that 1976 agreement to take the Brookline Hill Station out of it. That's everything. I, I have, I'm here to answer any questions you have. The school committee signs four of those five documents. They, they voted to sign and execute, and did execute last Thursday. So once you execute them, we'll be able to get them back to the T and hopefully get the project continuing to roll. We are working there. If you drive by, you see Skanska onsite now. We did sign a, you did sign a license for entry earlier in the summer, but the scope of work under that license is limited. So we are, we do need to get these in place, the, the new license for entry in place because it will allow Skanska to get the project completely on track and moving and try to get us as close to the previously planned calendar as we can. I'm here to answer any questions. Ray's here as well.
Well, I have to say that this little piece of this project is complex as can be. I hope you're on top of it. Hope Ray is on top of it. Oh, don't you get. You have to say yes.
We're all happy looking at each other. Don't worry. I have to commend Ray and also special counsel. They've been, they've been great on this.
So in the license agreement, or license for entry and easement agreement, and probably a couple others, among other items, there is a nondiscrimination provision, which is MBTA's basically standard boilerplate. What, what it says is that the town is obligated to contract, encourage, and utilize minority and female business enterprises in the procurement of materials and service in the project. So I'd like to get, you know, just an email or something, you know, describing, you know, what our plan to do that is. I think it's something that, you know, many people in town would be interested in knowing. I'm interested in knowing. I mean, it's something in the boilerplate that, you know, having worked on, you know, projects like this with zillion documents, sometimes gets lost, so. Any other questions or comments? No?
Just that, just that this is in so incredibly complex. And I want to thank Jonathan and Ray and Doug McGarrett, who have worked so hard to come up with, you know, language that was suitable in protecting the town's interests here, as well as getting the agreement from, obviously, this agreement is critical because we can't have, if we don't have it, we can't build over the T and then our whole plan falls apart for, for the Cypress building anyway. So I, I think we need, we've had opportunities to hear the issues before, but this is now where we really are going to sign on the dotted line and say, yeah, we agree with it.
Yeah. Yeah, I noticed the, particularly the indemnification and hold, hold harmless provisions and insurance provisions sort of shocked me until I realized that, you know, the complexity of this project requires incredible insurance requirements imposed on the town. I assume we've, you know, sort of factored that into our budget and all, and, you know, is, I mean, it's something that, although it's scary to me, is not something that is outside of the, you know, outside of what's, would be expected on a project like this. You know, we're required to carry huge amounts of insurance to protect MBTA. And I assume, I assume we've, you know, really gone through that and made sure that either through self-insurance or other insurance, you know, we're covered there.
We are, and I appreciate you bringing that up. We've, that, that was an issue where we, we did spend a good deal of time negotiating with the T. And I'm happy to report that while it will, it does represent a step farther than the town normally takes. We will need to take on liability, liability insurance obligation. Once the easement agreement is in place, we will be, we have worked hard to make sure those limits are reasonable, given, given what we're talking about here. And in addition, we have, we were able to negotiate a 10-year window in which the MBTA and the town will sit back down and reexamine those liability insurance obligations to make sure they're still appropriate, given now that the use has, has sort of solidified and we actually see what's happening.
A little background on that point. We had tried to propose and convince the MBTA that the town was self-insured and that that had been the way we've operated. We've always met our obligations. It was something we expected in this case, but that, no go. I mean, we, we tried that very hard. So we, this is what we've come up with.
And, but, and, and the bottom line is, we have factored that into the budget. It'll, it'll be an operating expense going forward, once the, once again, everything is in place.
Any other questions, comments? Thoughts? Well, okay. This is not a public hearing, but if anyone in the audience has anything to say, questions, this is your time. Seeing none. I move approval of the following documents related to the construction of the new Brookline High School expansion located at 111 Cypress Street, as well as certain improvements to the MBTA Brookline Hill Station. I'll just run through them quickly. License for entry agreement, easement agreement, escrow agreement, amendments to 1976. License for entry agreement, easement agreement, escrow agreement, amendments to 1976 parking agreement, and conditional assignment of MBTA station improvements permits. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair of votes, aye. Thank you.
Thank you. And now that you've voted, I will get to give you the good news, that they want five copies of everything, so I hope your signing hands are ready, because it's
You told us we would have voted no.
Five copies of each. So, Kate will have them at the end, conclusion of the meeting. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Let's go back to item 9A, question of approving the minutes of September 17, 2019. We have to do that, right, Kate? Any comments or edits to the minutes? Okay. I found a typo that I told Kate about, so, small thing. I move approval of the minutes of September 17, 2019. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair of votes, aye. I guess next, reserve fund transfer. Question of authorizing a request for a reserve fund transfer from the advisory committee to expedite funding necessary to implement marijuana sales impact mitigation activities until community impact fee funding is made available under Article III of the November 19, 2019 special town meeting. I hear Mr. Kleckner has sort of an update on that?
I do. Mr. Chair, thank you for, so just for background, if you talk a little bit about revenue that comes from marijuana operations, there's really two separate sources of revenue. The first is a tax, an excise tax, that the state allows, and this town adopted, 3% excise tax. And that is going to the general fund of the town. In fact, we've made certain commitments to, when we passed the last override, that we would endeavor to expand our non-property tax revenue, and certainly marijuana sales tax revenue is going to be very helpful in that regard. There was another source of funds called community impact fees, and those are sometimes confused, because they're also at 3%. But frankly, whereas sales of, the sales tax is only based on the sale of non-medical, the host community impact fee, the 3%, is based on all sales. And so, we have been able to generate a fair amount of money with our host community agreement with NEDA. We've already received, I believe, over $600,000. We cannot spend that without town meeting appropriation. It has to be spent for items that are specific to the impacts, the mitigation of impact from that operation. So, we're certainly prepared, and we've submitted an article in the town meeting warrant to do that. However, as you well know, there's been a lot of immediate requests for mitigation, and so, we initially talked about possibly a reserve fund transfer that could advance us the funds. We decided that it's probably, given where we are in the current fiscal year, we've got a long way to go. We have money in the current fiscal budget, fiscal year budgets of the departments, and we've identified, I'm going to get my work here, I believe, $40,000 in expenses to cover immediately, and we'd like to begin to do that. Now, we don't think we need a transfer for that purpose, but we do want you to know, and we want our advisory committee to know, that, you know, we can't afford to spend money out of town departments without getting put back. So, the first $40,000 of those funds that we're going to seek at the November town meeting will be putting back into the various budgets. But we have plenty of funds that we have available for this purpose, and I can go down the list if I can find my, I'm having a little problem with our new technology here, so bear with me for a second.
Hopefully, it won't talk back to you.
Well, I'm going to have to go the original way. I'm sure. So, let me explain. So, there's a total of $40,000 that I'm proposing. $7,000 of that would be in overtime to the police department to support dedicated enforcement. We think a bike unit would be appropriate for that. $5,000 in neighborhood parking enforcement, that we would be doing more enforcement by our civilian parking enforcement control in the neighborhoods. $9,000 to support overtime in our police department to allow the licensing and administrative support personnel to dedicate more time to NEDA. $2,500 in DPW overtime to support a dedicated litter crew that would be going in the parks and on the streets around Brookline Village. $12,000 for additional Big Belly trash receptacles, which are the solar-powered trash receptacles that would be necessary in these areas. And then, $4,500 in DPW overtime to support additional park ranger coverage. So, that's all money that we have available in the budget, but I don't want to expend that without your concurrence, that we can, we would reappropriate or reimburse that funding at the town meeting in November.
So, instead of authority for a reserve fund transfer, you're asking for authority to reappropriate funds?
Expend, basically, overexpend in the current year's budget, with the understanding that it will be reimbursed in the various department budgets in these amounts that I've talked about.
Are these amounts just to cover the time between now and when town meeting authorizes?
Yes, for the most part, yep.
So, there'll be additional expenditure of that money after?
Significant. And in my memo, I did include a, the requests, several hundred thousands of dollars of requests, that we're still looking at. I think we want more community input, more input from this board. But, yes, we'll be, we expect to appropriate several hundred thousand dollars in November.
So, let's say that we vote tonight to authorize this. What are the immediate, like, next steps? Do you go before AC, like, others?
No, no, no requirement. I just, I basically, based on this vote, I would authorize the departments to start spending the money tomorrow.
Oh, okay. And then, behind the scenes, we basically go through the process of getting before the advisory committee and?
And eventually, town meeting.
Yeah.
Under Article III.
So, this is money that, for example, the police department was planning to spend in December, which we're now using in October and November. And when town meeting votes or appropriates the funds, that money will be available for spending according to the regular, or according to its expected schedule.
With the understanding of 40, the first $40,000, we go back to reimburse the departments for the monies they've already spent.
So, forgive me, because it's been awhile. What's the difference between the tax and the community impact fee, as far as, like, looking at bringing on additional police officers, like, long-term?
Well...
Because I would seem, I would see the community impact money as being kind of targeted, specific, discreet, kind of short-term.
No, not necessarily. As long as the money is there and the impacts are there, I think we should spend it for that purpose.
But are we organizing a long-term plan for the tax revenue that's?
Right now, that, right now, that, the only commitment has been to the general fund to support the town's budget.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'll just, I'm glad you put this together. Thank you. You know, we've been sort of talking to residents in the area of NEDA, and then also some folks that are interested in limiting the scope of the shop over on Beacon Street, near where I live, near where Chairman Green lives. And a lot of the concerns that I've heard about, I think, I think would be addressed by enforcement. The neighbors there might say, not all of them, but certainly some of them. I think, a couple things here. One is, this is to select board member Hamilton's comment. I think if we're going to ramp up enforcement, one of the things that we've seen is that our police are stretched thin at this point, with the number of construction sites that they need to be at, and additional details. And I'm very concerned that some of our officers are working a detail shift and then coming in to work, you know, for the public immediately after, with no break in between, so it's a full shift sometimes, and then coming in and working for us for a full shift. They certainly can't be at their best. I know I'm not at my best. If I just worked eight hours and went to a second job and worked another eight hours, I wouldn't be. So, I think as quickly as we can, if we can get to that place where we actually, if we decide, I mean, this isn't going away, so if we decide we need more officers, that we get to a place where we simply create more jobs and hire more officers would be great.
Well, I should have been clear. That is our intent with the money that we appropriate in November. I'm a little concerned about that, because, you know, host community funds aren't necessarily going to be here forever, and we'll have to figure out, if we have too many employees, based on the funding we have, we'll have to figure out how to create a reduction in force. But I think at least for the next five years, I think we can expect to have this host community impact funding, which will allow us to actually hire more people.
Okay. The other comment they made, after sort of, I'm out here trying to get more officers hired, is also to make sure that, you know, I'll be frank, and I've heard this from members of the public, I've seen probably too many times when there are multiple officers detailed to a single location where they're standing together. Whenever I see two officers on a detail standing together, talking to each other, I think but to myself, I only need one of you right now. And if this were brief, they were brief interactions, I might not bring it up, but I've seen this many times and for long periods of time. So, I think if we're going to invest these funds into enforcement, that the neighbors there and the public should be assured that these officers are going to be not just huddled together, but actually dispersed in those areas, checking for these things and making sure that people aren't breaking, I think we've got good laws. We've got laws against public urination and littering and smoking in public and all that kind of stuff, that they are actually enforcing these laws. And at the same time, you know, that they're there as a means for deterrence and ensuring that, you know, this is all walking this line, this sort of high wire of making sure that we're not engaging in stop and frisk and unnecessary field interrogations and things like that, but that it is a real deterrence program. So, maybe I'm talking to the chief right now, but he's not here, so I'm saying it out loud right now.
Well, I think you ought to talk to the public, too.
I am.
I mean, stop and frisk issues that you're referring to are a problem if the public really is asking for that, and that is an issue, I think, we have. Any other comments?
I haven't heard the public ask for that. I think they, they don't want people peeing on their lawn and
Well, no, I'm talking about in terms of...
...leaving jars of urine, you know, everywhere. I can understand that.
I can understand that, too. I'm referring to comments about outsiders coming in, shady people coming in.
So, let me...
I've heard those, too, yeah.
So, I'm overjoyed that we're spending these dollars. I think, I've been hearing from a lot of people for the past three to four weeks about it, so I'm glad that we're appropriating these $40,000 to deal with some of the issues that I've heard about and have actually witnessed firsthand. I do want to maybe be the skunk at the lawn party and say that this is the first step, and I think what our response should be. I think there is some other requests that are being made by particularly residents of High Street Hill and White Place around changes to the way that NEDA operates. And I certainly haven't made up my mind, but I do want to hear the argument firsthand about why people think that an appointment-only model is the right way to go, or why a reduction in hours is the right way to go, and get input from subject matter experts, which are both residents who see these, the conditions firsthand, but also department heads and our first, frontline employees who have expertise in parking enforcement and traffic enforcement and public safety. So, I think, overjoyed that this is happening, but looking forward to step two as well.
So, we, there was a provision in our license agreement for a 90-day meeting with NEDA with respect to the hours. That didn't happen before my term on the board, or as chair, okay. But we're going to schedule that for the 22nd of October. I guess that's two weeks from now. So, that'll be a meeting where we review the issues regarding the times that NEDA is open, and I assume we'll also be reviewing other issues. Also, in the meantime, we have approached NEDA with a number of requests with respect to their operations, and those requests, you know, largely have been accepted and they're being implemented. I think you all got an email from NEDA on that aspect, or that issue, today. The public should also look for NEDA's report on their annual community meeting, which was held a couple weeks ago, which will go into greater detail in terms of what changes they are making, both in response to the select board, as well as their own initiative to address the concerns of people in the community and our concerns. So, look forward, look for that, and, you know, I think that that will be very helpful, as well as a good template for the Coolidge Corner store that will be opening, who knows when. I don't think it's anytime soon, but, you know, be a good template for that store, you know, which I'm, of course, interested in, because like Mr. Fernandez, I live in that community, Catty Corner almost to the St. Mark's Park, so I have a real interest in that. But we'll fix that, those problems when they come up. Any other comments, questions?
I have a comment, and I think you've already contemplated this as chair. I would find it immensely helpful to organize like a task force for some of the voices that have really emerged to represent the community that is impacted, to have them have a seat at the table as to how this money is utilized.
Yeah. Yeah, I've talked about that with some people, and, you know, given the special town meeting warrant article that's coming up, and we'll probably discuss, was on the agenda today? No, I will discuss in the future. And I think we, I mean, I think it probably makes sense to see how that sort of unfolds before we actually set up those type of structures, but I think that's a great, important idea, particularly as we're opening up additional stores here in Brookline, so.
I'm sure that this will be the case when we hear the special town meeting warrant articles that we got the signatures to hear, but I would find it immensely helpful to have our town council weigh in on the implications of some of these proposed warrant articles, whether or not they're even within our power.
Yeah, I'm sure the town council will require them to, any rate. I see Carla Benka in the back there. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but since you are vice chair of the advisory committee, if you have any comments, since we are not taking up this reserve fund transfer that you probably came up to the meeting to hear about. Okay. Just giving you the opportunity to state your, you know, state your view.
The approach that Mr. Kleckner has suggested is that his approach makes sense. She's sharing the microphone. She's...
Yep.
Good. Carla, could you come to the microphone so that our TV audience will have the opportunity to see who you are and hear what you're saying? I was going to repeat, I was going to repeat what you're saying, but you started talking longer than I thought you would.
I'm Carla Benka, and I'm vice chair of the advisory committee. I'm here this evening because I wanted to hear the discussion about a reserve fund transfer. If you had voted that route, I was going to run home, get the agenda posted, have the public hearing set, ready to go on Thursday, so, by the appropriate subcommittees, and then take a vote at the advisory committee's meeting on Thursday, so we could get going with the funding right away. Needless to say, I like Mr. Kleckner's approach of not going the reserve fund transfer route, because, A, it's more straightforward, but also because it essentially accomplishes the same thing. It means you can put the money into the services right away before voting the final amount at town meeting in November. So, I think we're good to go, and now all I'll have to do is rearrange the agenda for Thursday, and we'll be fine.
I'm sure that you'd rather do that than have this on the agenda.
Yeah, we have a lot of public hearings, as you will, as you do, too. It's a busy fall.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, so, how would you, how would you phrase the vote?
I don't think, I, well, okay.
You need a vote?
If I could ask the board to move to support the expenditure of $40,000 in funds in anticipation of the appropriation at town meeting, I think that would be fine.
Okay, so, I move approval of the move to expend $40,000 in the way Okay, so I move approval of the move to expend $40,000 in the way that Town Administrator Kleckner indicated. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to warrant articles. Back to warrant articles 26, 27, 28. Is anyone in the audience who wants to speak to those? Comment, I think. What, are you here for comments? Oh, okay.
Thirty. Oh, yeah, thirty is here, 29.
Just very briefly, I want to speak to the proposal for the amendment to keep or rename the school, the Coolidge Corner School. I think that Kate's error in judgment, that, I disagree with her analysis in that the main reason the school name, the school was changed from devotion had to do with the fact that he was a slave owner. Therefore, to me, it's more than symbolic that it be changed to an African-American name, whether it's Florida, as was voted on by students and approved by the school committee, or a different African-American name. But to suggest that it be kept at the Coolidge Corner School denies the history of why the name was changed to begin with. Thank you.
Okay, we're back on warrant articles 26, 27, 28. Any other comments? Continuation of the earlier hearing? No?
I'll say something.
You don't have to, Joanna.
So I'm Joanna Baker. I live on Beacon Street. I'm a member of town meeting. And I just observed that, I was one of perhaps the first person who wrote to the select board, whatever night you noticed your meeting, that the Article 26 was going to be delivered, discussed, deliberated upon at 7:30. And that just occurred to me as a human being aware that families with young children have nighttime routines that are definitely going to be disrupted if the family members need to be here to speak on behalf of Article 26, or, you know, 27 or 28. The fact that we asked for you to change the time shouldn't be a big favor so that families could participate. It should be encouraged so that more people of more generations who aren't normally at town hall have a chance to experience the privilege of participating in, you know, the 300-plus-year-old tradition of town meeting. So that you did move the hearing to 6:00 PM was a terrific move, and somebody I spoke to privately on Facebook who's been around town affairs longer than me said, "I'm really sure to me that you got wind of a protest and therefore decided to skip your executive session, your private session, and go right into public comment so that you could cut the legs out from under the protesters," which of course, excuse me, took longer, "and cut into the organization and understanding of when the children and their families and the supporters of Articles 26, 27, 28 would get to speak." It's been chopped up over three sessions tonight. I'm a little bit of an old hand at this. This is chaos. How can people know when to come and look at the TV if they're at home? And people are, because they're taking care of their little kids. Is the hearing over? Is the hearing still going on? I mean, this feels like Keystone Cops. So I wanted to thank you for moving the hearing for the school things to six so that people with families could participate, but then I feel like you undermined it, and that doesn't gain respect for the board. Thank you.
Any other comments? On warrant articles 26, 27, 28?
I just
Mr. Rotman.
I listened to Mr. Selwyn with great agreement and also with admiration. You know, he's not a lawyer, and he speaks like better than a lot of lawyers that I know, perhaps even better than myself. He was so logical, calm, and correct that it was a faulted process. I think Bob Sberba was a great guy. I wrote about him in my book, Voices of Brookline. I also wrote about Ethel Weiss in that book and a lot of other people. Came out in 2005. You know, I really enjoyed getting to know Bob Sberba so closely that I could write a chapter about him and have him say to me afterwards, "Larry, you got it right." I felt like a student, and I was very thankful that he made that comment. We've heard a lot about the children doing a lot of work, and they did. One of the problems in this whole thing, as I've observed it coming in, as I say, it's not a racial issue to me, but as far as the children are concerned, as I said before, it's not how much work they get. It's really, the issue is the candidate who's up for being chosen, and I think that the merit of a candidate really is the guiding principle. This has been a real terrific experience for me. I've lived in Brookline since I was two years old, and that's a long time ago. And I sat in the town meeting way back in the, when I started practicing law in the late 50s to the late 60s, when I moved over to Sumner Road with my wife. And so I've seen Ben Trustman, you've probably heard that name, and the people have come after through Sandy Gadsby, and he's a terrific guy, and also to Jerry that I wrote about also in that book. So Brookline Town Government has always been a big pride. And so as I got into this, I really got upset about the fact that it seemed to be an unfair process, and I think Mr. Selwyn demonstrated that admirably. And I really think I would urge you to think very carefully about what you do in this regard, as far as these articles are concerned, because I think that, and another thing that I want to say is that the mothers of all of these kids who worked on this can't really see this for the undemocratic and faulted process that it was, because how can they do that? Their kids put in all this work, whether it was to the point or not, and they can't go against their kids. They can't see what's happened here. Now, maybe
Okay, it looks like you provoked someone to come up and answer.
Say it again?
Looks like you provoked someone to come up and answer your Now I got to give her an opportunity, so please wrap up.
Yeah, I will wrap up, but I think that it's
I mean, say what you want to say, but, you know.
No, I'm pretty much through. I think what I want to say is that Brookline Town Government has been a pride, and I think that even members of the selectmen, like the mothers, can be led to the point that they think that to name this school after a black person, in this particular case, I mean, there's nothing wrong with it, as I've said before, but it doesn't solve the problem when there's a candidate that other people have said goes to the very school and for 76 years.
Okay, great.
She just seems to me to be an obvious choice, quite devoid of the racial issue.
Thank you, Mr. Rotman. By the way, this is a discussion for town meeting. You know, we're going to take this up again and vote on it at another meeting. I'm not sure that we need to get into a back and forth here over, you know, whatever issue you're itching to talk about, Lauren.
No, listen, you've been very indulgent. I appreciate it, and I'm seeing you.
Okay, thank you. Please be brief.
Believe me, I'm going to be brief. I have places to be and people to see. Lauren Bernard, town meeting member, precinct eight.
And remember, you don't have to answer every
No, no, I'm
Save that for town meeting.
Oh, and I will.
I know you will.
I just would like to rebut in the sense that I am not the mother of one of the children who was on this committee. I'm a parent at the school. I run an after-school program. I engage with these children on a regular basis, heard over the course of almost two years what they did, but I just want to urge the board that these remarks about being a person not connected to the school are unfounded, because, like I said before, the fact that the children chose her as a finalist, that connection, I think, is stronger than, you know, JFK, who was in the classrooms for three years and all of that. I mean, I don't, the reason I just want to have sort of a final word about this, if I may, is that, as you mentioned, it's the merits of the person, but it's also the merits of the process. And I don't think anyone can speak and say that this person doesn't fulfill criteria to merit this distinction. She was a teacher. She was a teacher, she was a person of color. She was a remarkable person of color. And just because she wasn't known to us isn't a reason that a school shouldn't be named for her. And lastly, what better way to raise a person who is noble from obscurity? I have to take issue with what you're doing. I think it's
Ms. Bernard, I think we have to get into that debate. Okay, so I'm going to close this hearing on warrant articles 26, 27, 28. This is a first presentation of those warrant articles to the select board. As is typical, we do not vote on the first presentation. They'll be brought to the select board at a future time, at which point we will vote. We will use the interim to digest information that we have heard, as well as information that I'm sure you'll be sending to us by email. So do you have a question back there, real quick? Could you come to the microphone? I'm giving you an opportunity to do that, because I haven't seen you before, so.
Hi, my name is Erin Meyer. I'm not sure what other information you need. I live here in Brookline. My children attend the Coolidge Corner School. I am wondering how far in advance you think we might be let to know what time and day your next hearing would be? I
It'll be on our agenda. You should just look at our agenda.
Okay. When are those
We don't, at this point, know exactly when.
Okay.
We're trying to juggle, I think, 36 warrant articles. We have to hold hearings on and then vote on, so, you know, this is a
Is the morning of a standard?
Pardon me?
Is the morning of your meeting a standard time for them to come out?
No, we usually
Post on Fridays.
Post on Friday.
Friday, Friday at about 5:00, it gets released for the following Tuesday.
And Mondays are not the typical meeting time?
Correct. Generally, Tuesday evenings, it's the meetings
I know there's a lot of families that want to be involved, and I'd like to help share that information.
Good, thank you. Okay.
We have additional business. Please do not.
Please.
I've stopped listening.
Okay, you know my email, email it to me.
No, I can't. See, it's a personal story that I probably shouldn't tell.
Okay.
There are warrant articles that have not been heard tonight.
Oh, are they still in?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, warrant article 29, the petitioner is not here. Well, he checked.
He notified me he had to leave.
Okay, so we'll take that warrant article up at a later date. I believe that the advisory committee has recommended referral to the, actually, to Mr. Fernandez's small business committee, so that's, you know, one
I don't think I've heard in full committee yet, maybe subcommittee did.
Okay, so I have bad information. In any event, we'll take this up at a later date and
You're not accepting comments on 29?
No. So Article 30, Community Engagement Plan. Is that your article, Ms. Brown?
Oh, no.
Your name's down here.
It's a team
I'm with Noriega. Is your article?
It's a team effort. If there, well, it's a team effort if there's an HDMI cable here, which there might not be. I see only a VGA.
People got to get these to us beforehand.
Do you want to add really?
Yeah, you got to get these things to us beforehand, because the experts will help set it up. We are 20th century folks who can't help you.
Nope, because that's VGA, not HDMI. Downstairs has HDMI.
Mr. Franco is 21st century guy, and he knows this, though.
No, there's no, I have a, it's, there's no key, like, there's no
Can't you just talk to us?
No, that might work.
A little shot.
Will it work? Does this even connect? So shall we just wing it?
Might as well.
Okay. Thank you. So my name's Mariah Obrega. I'm a town meeting member from precinct four, member of advisory committee, one of the three co-petitioners for a warrant article 30, which is to create a new article in the town's general bylaws pertaining to a Brookline Community Engagement Plan, and I am here with one of my other co-petitioners. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Deborah Brown, precinct one. Thank you.
Wait, let's, you know, reduce the amount of jock killer, so.
We're going to get really serious, really good, without the slides. It'll be a little hard, and I apologize. So maybe I could just take a quick show of hands. Who's familiar with community engagement and the principles of community engagement? Okay, okay. So basically, I'll talk about it, then. So community engagement is really a process, and it's a bidirectional communication that allows you really to do significant outreach within the community, but not just one direction. It goes in both directions, and getting feedback from the community, it's sort of like a circular process. It's not just a one-time thing. And it really helps you get a lot better information about community needs and match sort of the output of resources to the best purposes and how we can use those resources. And it really builds relationships. It's about creating relationships to make sure that decisions are being made in the long term that inform really what the community needs. So what can it can do? It can help us identify and prioritize issues. It can help us develop and maintain trust between government and community. It can support meaningful participation by the community in decision-making, especially from people whose voices are not most typically heard in our standard processes. And it enables clarity and transparency about expectations from the community and from government about the involvement of each. Municipalities have had community engagement plans for decades. This is not some novel thing. It's really a very common best practice in government and NGOs. So it's important, but it's not innovative by any means, by any stretch of the imagination. Deborah's going to talk quickly about a brief case study that happened in Boston in the 70s, is that right?
No.
No, more recently than that?
In the 90s.
In the 90s, I'm sorry.
Leading into the 2000s.
So I'll let you take over, just talking about sort of the benefits, you can hear about a story and why it's worthwhile to participate in this.
All right, did I get to my notes? So the case study involves the South Bay Incinerator. Does anybody here remember the South Bay Incinerator? It was a facility, an incinerator, right off 93, where, right where South Bay is.
That shopping, that shopping center?
Just before you got to that shopping place, there was an old abandoned incinerator. And that incinerator was, it was used to incinerate all kinds of metals. And so it was heavy, had had high levels of arsenic, lead, and mixed waste, so nucides. And people lived there. People lived there. And so we got a call one day, I was working at E.P., and it was like, what to do? And we were like, well, my boss called me on a Sunday morning and said, "You need to fix this." What the heck? I mean, not so easily done. We didn't even know who owned the property. And so what we did was we engaged in a community process. First, what we did was we brought all of the players together who we thought were involved. So Mass, D.E.P., the Attorney General's Office, we brought in community groups, we brought in the local homeless shelter, we brought in in the local homeless shelter, we brought in a homeless persons organization, we brought in a mental health organization. And we all sat down and it was like, all right, we're going to need to shut this place down, but how do we do it in such a way that we don't terrify people? And we also make sure that these people have a place to go. So, what we did, and was rather than just sort of kick the can down the road, we said that we need two things in this process. We need more than involvement, we need collaboration. And we need the kind of collaboration that allows everybody to participate in the decision-making process. And we wanted that decision-making process to be not just the government people, but everybody. And so people decided on what the vehicle would look like to say, to decide how the site would get cleaned up. It was a memorandum of understanding, and all of the parties signed it. And in fact, it was the, an environmental community group that led those negotiations. They were the ones that actually acted as the initial conveners. They were the ones with a small amount of seed money from EPA that did the outreach and got the people to the table on a consistent basis. And so, what was the end point? Well, the site got cleaned up, people got placed in different homes, they got, they had their blood levels tested for a reasonable period of time, the kids much longer because some of them did have elevated blood levels. And what's there now is the greater Boston food pantry. And so, that was a success. And when I talk about community engagement, I don't talk about it as an add-on or something that's nicer. I talk about it as a basic component of effective decision-making. And so, it's not an add-on, it is an essential piece. So, that's just sort of a quick example. And I think we could all come up with examples of where it hasn't worked really well, but I'd like to focus on that it can work really well, and it's not brain science. It's, you know, depending on what you want, sometimes it could be as simple as, I just want to notify people that something's taking place. You know what? And that may mean that you put notices up, but not necessarily where you put them up for the usual suspects. You think about who your audience is. And what we're saying to the town of Brooklyn is, as we engage in decision-making processes, huge or relatively small, that we need that kind of process and inclusion and for people to actually begin to ask the questions early on. So it's not an add-on, it's not an addendum. It is as basic as the fundamental decision that you're going to make. So, and that's why this bylaw becomes so very important, because despite the fact that, I counted four, five different community and different town bylaws with some community engagement language. But I can't tell you how many meetings I go to, and there's not a clear understanding on the part of the chairperson, or the members, or even the audience, what their expectation should be. And if you have good community engagement, I'm going to use two E words. You have equity, and you have efficiency. The 15-second story is GE, I had a case with GE, they didn't want to do any community engagement. The community was up in arms, and it took them maybe two hours to realize that they needed to go back and come up with a community engagement plan. They came up with a community, an honest community engagement plan for a cleanup. And it took a matter of months, as opposed to what people were estimating would be years. And you think about the money that was saved, there were some benefits for the community. So it really can be a win-win all the way around, so.
So, just following up on the point Deborah just made, San Francisco, their Controller's Office actually did an analysis of the benefits of community engagement. And while they prefaced it by saying that community engagement is sort of a fundamental human right, they actually did find specific economic benefits to community engagement, specifically capital projects, actually, that to this exact point, it would likely shorten the project planning and construction phases of projects. And also, actually, it impacts the bond ratings. As we've been hearing from B.Fact recently, there is this community acceptance and adoption and willingness to pay that feeds into this. And so the Controller's Office thought it would directly impact that. And also, better information sharing, leading to better overall adherence to programs in general, and the benefit that that provides throughout any sort of municipal government. So going to the three points of the warrant article, which you should have, I think, in front of you. So there's guidelines, there's indicators, and then there's a formal evaluation process. And so, the guidelines are to be developed, it's as part of the process, and it's going to be led by the, the development of the guidelines led by the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. And the warrant article itself is purposefully relatively vague in terms of the exact structure of the guidelines to allow town staff the latitude to come up with a plan that they find is appropriate for the town. We've had extensive discussions with Lloyd Gellino, who is the head of the department, who is enthusiastic about the development of this community engagement plan. The second aspect of the community engagement plan is the indicators. And again, the indicators, so they would be developed for each department and committee, and the idea is that they could be reported on annually. So, we get the budget report, we have all those indicators of progress or things that departments are supposed to do, and we could embed those directly into the report. And then also for departments and committees, they could also have this on their websites as well. And then evaluation. ODICR has also agreed to lead the sort of annual evaluation and improvement process surrounding this in reporting what went well this past year, what could be improved either within the actual outcomes of the departments and committees, but also the program itself, the evaluation plan itself. If it's missing some aspect or it needs to be tweaked, they are the ones who lead that process. And then finally, as part of the evaluation process, the results that are reported out for each department and committee as ODICR evaluates them actually would be included in the performance and reappointment review for each municipal officer. So that is department heads and committee members during their reappointment process. So that data could be included. And last point is impact on resources. We've had a lot of discussions about this, especially within advisories, you can imagine. But Lloyd has said that he is planning on seeking an additional staff person for his office, whether or not this passes. I don't want to get too far ahead of him, and he's not here now, and I know that he hasn't gone through the full budget process with Mel. But, but his vision for the role that he's seeking is someone who specifically would be a community organizer, community engagement liaison, who would do a lot of this work and really take the, minimize the impact on any, on the departments directly by really facilitating their community engagement work for them in a way that's very efficient and effective and does the, really puts the departments in the best foot forward with the community and vice versa, really facilitates that relationship. And he also said that for some of the non-personal expenses, for example, we've talked about childcare expenses, maybe something that would facilitate community engagement would be providing childcare, or additional printing costs to get materials out, that he believes he could absorb those within his currently, his current budget, that he's been careful about shepherding his resources and also working with external partners. And so he doesn't anticipate this having an immediate additional budget request for him. And that's really, I think, the end of our, anything else we should add? Anything else you want to add?
Some people actually find that it's fun. You know, it's a whole different type, you know, the basic work that you do that, you know. I used to manage EPA's chemical safety program, and part of our community engagement was actually getting fire departments to participate in emergency exercises, so it would be like a chemical release. But part of it was also just community engagement by getting these entities to understand that they needed to know what chemicals were in their neighborhoods. We couldn't get them to do it by just asking. We couldn't get them to do it by formally asking a governor. But when we, when we made it an exercise and spread the word far and wide, you know, people showed up, and it was a different kind of engagement. But we achieved a level of safety and had the measures to show for it that we didn't have before that. And it was cheaper. It was cheaper to do an exercise, even a tabletop exercise, than continuing to go out to fire departments, first responders, manufacturers, and asking them over and over again. So I could cite lots of examples for you about how it saves money and how it's a tool to engage people, depending on the work that they do. But it's, it's, it's essential. It's really mission critical if we want to be the best that we can be.
Any questions from the board? Comments? Fernandez, you have?
I have thoughts. I don't know if Susan, if you were here for comment on this, or you're just hanging out?
Okay, I'm here for.
Got it, okay.
You're for public what?
Oh.
Oh.
On this?
Crap.
We already went past that.
Yeah.
But we'll, we'll listen to you.
Yeah, after this? Maybe we can close that. All right. Thank you, first of all. I did want, you know, I appreciate you mentioning this around the staffing, because, you know, one of the things that I've seen is, we as a town keep asking more and more and more of the diversity, inclusion, and community relations office. The Gail Warren article, inequity consultant, now they're, they're helping work with Indigenous Peoples' Day. The role of the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations is, seems to be expanding, and this all puts additional stress on that particular office, which is, which is at this point very small. And you could imagine a diversity, inclusion office and a separate community engagement office. I like the idea of keeping these things together, but certainly there's a need to, if we're going to continue down this road as a town, which frankly I think we should, is to, is to provide additional staffing to that office. I imagine in the next town meeting, there'll be something else that'll ask this office to weigh in or do or be engaged in something related to diversity work. So, that's just the only comment I have, but otherwise, you know, I think what you, what you provided here is really helpful roadmap. If you could, I looked up the, the San Francisco report on community engagement, there seems to be a few, which is good. There's one for police, there's another, if you can send us maybe the one that you think we should take a look at, that'd be helpful.
Sir?
If you just want to email it to the whole board.
I can send you the slides, and the slides have the references and the notes, or whatever you call them. But there, but the point is that big cities like Boston and San Francisco have multiple community engagement reports, and San Francisco was the city that chose to actually do a financial or an economic analysis of the benefits or not of that, and found the benefit. But again, I have that link I can share.
That'd be great. Thanks.
When I was listening to the presentation, my first thought was, how much is this going to cost? And maybe I don't have to ask that question because we have an advisory committee that really delves into that question. But, you know.
We're responsible, too.
We are, we are. But thank goodness for the advisory committee. But then the second thought is, how much time is wasted when people become suddenly aware of an issue that's been going on, and then they get, you know, involved? And sometimes it steers that process, and we end up having to kind of redo the process all over again, that I'm really thinking of the schools here, when a process is about halfway along, and then something happens where a group finally realizes that something's going on, and they say, I didn't know. And then we, we have to ask ourselves, do we keep going? Do we kind of hit the reset button? How do we handle this? And it's uncomfortable because we didn't knowingly try to exclude people, but we followed a process, and we thought we were engaging with people.
Well, first of all, I'm going to take a little exception to that, because I actually did come up with a community engagement outline for the renaming process.
Oh, I'm not talking about the renaming process. I'm actually referring to the ninth school.
Oh, my God. We weren't going to talk about the negatives. And maybe if we had, you know, like, community engagement templates, and that was part of, like with the renaming, that was one of the first questions that we asked, what does community engagement look like? And if that had been one of the first questions, and who's on the hook for what, and what does it look like, maybe there would have been a different outcome. Because quite frankly, I heard people saying things at the polls about the ninth school. I literally had to say, you have to stop spreading this misinformation, it's just not true. But had there been a more robust, perhaps, or more nuanced, depending on the neighborhood, community engagement strategy, maybe I would not have been confronted with what bordered it online. I mean, and so that's, I mean, I think it's worth it, and even if you, we call them in the chemical safety world, a hot wash. And what it really is, is a debriefing. You go back to, and you ask yourself, what worked, what didn't work, and the whys, and how can you make it better next time? And so, I don't know that it's necessarily a waste of time, you know, go back to the days of TQ, Total Quality Management. It's just a mechanism for improvement. I just see it as a mechanism for improvement. And every department, you know, every board and commission should be about continuous improvement.
I'm a big proponent of iterate and improve. And I choose to believe that our town staff, from frontline staff to department heads, and our volunteers who serve on board or commissions, either as a member or as a chair, genuinely want to do the right thing and want to engage with residents of the town and those interested in the topics that are before them. I do think that sometimes people need a little bit help about the best way to do that. And I, that's the spirit in which I take this warrant article.
Absolutely.
And I applaud you for, for bringing it forward and trying to advance the conversation and allow for that iteration and improvement. The one thing that pops out at me during the presentation, and I'm not suggesting that this go into the warrant article, I just think it's part of the wash cycle that, that's going to surround this conversation around the warrant article, is that there needs to be some consideration of training as well. So I think guidelines are great, but there's a lot of people who get documents and either don't fully understand it, or just don't have the time to read it. And I think giving people the tools and allowing for a dialogue would be very helpful in this context.
And that actually came up during one of our conversations with Lloyd, and he said that, that he thought that he might have at least a chunk of the funds to actually, you know, identify a vendor, and we talked about train to trainer training, so that, you know, you save money. But clearly, this is not one where you say, all right, here's a bullet, go forth and conquer. I mean, it's, there's a mentoring piece to this, there's just, yeah. We agree totally.
Okay.
And we've got to pay for it.
This is a public hearing? Any, yes?
Hi, I just, just a couple of points. One, I'm support, I really urge you to support this, and I wanted to point out, it's totally consistent with and actually helps government lines and race inequity process. It'll help move the town to actually do some of the implementing that it needs to do. And second of all, if we had, if this had happened before NEDA opened, and the community that I also live in, so I've heard lots of complaints, if that had happened before... happened before, some of the drama, stir and drang, and possibly even some of the problems could have been addressed before the problems happened. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sharon Abramowitz. I'm from Precinct 12. I'm a member of the school committee, but I'm here as a private citizen. So I want to speak on behalf of Warren Article 30. I happen to be a community engagement expert, and I recently completed the United Nations Children's Fund Minimum Standards and Indicators for Community Engagement. And I find this warrant article to be entirely consistent with that, which is now being taken up and used as national guidelines in countries around the world. When you think about community engagement, and I certainly do not want to replicate anything of this very, any aspect of this presentation, which credit was done without the presentation. I think that one way to think about what community engagement is, is sort of through a cardiovascular structure, right? Information, knowledge, and beliefs move, have to move back and forth through the body of a community, right? And what we have here in Brookline effectively is arteries and veins without capillaries. And what community engagement does is it builds in place the capillaries. Okay? And when we think about it this way, we start to realize that community engagement infrastructure is a core component of the communications infrastructure that we already have a mandate to do as a municipality, right? We're already responsible for getting information out to the public and for getting whatever it is that the public has, which could include waste, right, back, right? So I think you get kind of into that bidirectional movement. Now, I had the opportunity to witness the debate about this at advisory, and I noticed that when we think about the community engagement plan, what our minds often first go to is the most politicized examples of community mobilization, right? We think about pot shops, and we think about the ninth school, and we think about e-scooters, right? And we also have to recognize that regardless of how sophisticated a community engagement plan you ever have, there's always going to be grassroots mobilizations that are going to happen as a result of sort of specific actions, right, specific events, right? That is a core part of just being in a democracy, right? This is not necessarily about that, right? I'd like you to consider the fact that community engagement is about the core, basic functions of this town. It's about public infrastructure, public health, public safety, education, and accessing insufficiently represented communities who need the attention and the information that comes from our town. Okay? So examples that aren't scooters or pot shops that come to mind, for example, would be having a community engagement infrastructure would facilitate basic public health campaigns around, for example, measles vaccines campaigns, right, for very young children, or about weather emergencies, right, when systems fail. Okay? And generally speaking, what we're increasingly seeing globally is that countries from Sweden to Uganda are adopting community engagement plans as a core part of preparedness, system strengthening, infrastructure development, and resiliency planning. Okay? It is being seen as the number one sort of leading mechanism for dealing with disaster management. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that when everything else goes away, what you have left are people who either do or don't know each other, do or don't trust each other, and do or don't have the capacity to move information in order to reorganize. It also happens to be the fact that the reason that you don't see a lot of examples of this in the United States is because the United States is, ranks incredibly low internationally in community engagement capacity in almost all areas, to include disaster response, environmental calamities, whatever, and especially epidemics, which happens to be an area of expertise. We rank really, really low in our community engagement capacity for that. I'm not going to go on too long. But what I want to say is that, why is this warrant article important? It's not just that community engagement's important. It's that a community engagement plan is important, right? And what has become increasingly apparent worldwide in humanitarian disasters, development contexts, very developed nations, is that without the plan, without coordination, integration, and resource mobilization for community engagement, you have a bunch of projects. You don't have systems. And what we want to move to is systems, not projects. And when we think about the Brookline system, we have to recognize that this, that we are already expending resources to do the labor that community engagement plans involve. We are already working and thinking all the time and mobilizing resources all the time to get information out and to try to get information back. What this does is it takes our existing systems, our incredibly strong and robust systems, like our town meeting infrastructure, our schools, again, our public health and our public safety systems, right? And we basically are laying an overlay over that that basically says, this is how you get information out into the capillaries, and this is how you pull it back. And in so doing, that is how you start to see the financial benefits that derive from it. The most frequent critique of community engagement is that it's too much work, too much labor, it takes too much time, and it takes too much money, right? But there is a very, very strong evidence base that says that the absence of community engagement costs all of those things too, and that in the end, it's really difficult to come up with an actual economic analysis for all of those things, but that you're probably ending up on the plus side with a community engagement strategy. The last thing that I'm going to say is, actually, just please support Warren Article 30.
Any other comments from the audience?
Regina Velli, South Brookline. How would, can you give me an example of how this, for example, I was at the microphone last week pointing out that we've had the largest number of oak trees removed from my street of any street in Brookline. I have no question, that's a fact, that it was finally attributed to the gas leaks. And yet, the communication didn't seem to go to the DPW, that an argument may be the people meeting to talk about, well, their water structure, their pipes have been rotting, they're all 80-year-old thing. How, other than the fact that I was here to tell you, how would this work with the community engagement? Just as an example, I'd like to know.
First, this would be my best guess, having never worked for the town of Brookline. But at the point in time that somebody figured out that there was a problem with the trees, your next step is, oh, we have to start telling people that there's a problem with the trees. And it's, and from there, you begin to ask the question, you know, maybe the whole department begins to ask, how are we handling this? But for this particular issue, I think the first thing is to communicate to people that there's a problem. Maybe you hold a meeting and-
We did, we did all of that. We invited the DPW in. We did all of that. We have a state of tree department. We did it all.
Well, then, I'm going to be the bearer of bad tidings to say that sometimes community engagement does not get you the answer that you want. It will get you the information, but it may not get you the answer that you want. But that still makes it okay because you heard it.
Thank you.
Let me be clear. I ran, I spent 17 years on those trees. I had meetings. I had, the department has come and the whole neighborhood was posted and came to the meeting. We had walked through the entire street. We did all of that. What finally got across to them were the trees were coming down on people's houses and on their cars. That's what finally communicated. Not our expression, nothing.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Susan Park. And just waiting to speak, I think this community engagement would be really beneficial in light of just my own canvassing that my team has been doing. And what's interesting is, you know, we now have about 1,200 signed petitions. And out of those 1,200, the majority of them didn't know about sanctuary. So I think, just like this community engagement project, that would be perfect because, you know, for whatever reason, for whatever reason they didn't know, I think just to keep this conversation going. And I think more people, we wouldn't be having this situation as well. I think that's one component of it. So that's all I want to say. Thanks.
Question. Actually, that's good. Would this structure increase the likelihood that departments would listen to the neighborhoods and the concerns? Would it require them to follow up with some kind of procedure that says, "We heard you. We met with you," that kind of thing?
As envisioned, the community engagement plan would outline a procedure by which that would happen. Now, whether or not they adhere to the procedure would partly be determined by how the plan outlines any enforcement, and that would be the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations that would determine that. With that said, it does include the indicators. And so if there is a indicator of community responsiveness of some kind, and that would be included in the department head's annual evaluation.
Did you say that's it, Bernard?
Pardon me?
No.
You know, I would just note, this is a yes or no, that this doesn't contemplate the role of town meeting members in terms of community engagement, does it?
It could.
Does it? It doesn't?
Yes.
It does?
Yes.
It does? Okay. I'll just point, I just-
Well, can I just point?
Sure.
The Warren Article says that it applies to all the employees of the town. I don't think that town meeting members are included. That doesn't mean that they shouldn't be part of the plan. It just doesn't include any sort of mechanisms. Are they?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, it seems to me that if-
Yes, it is very broad.
It seems to me that town meeting members are that group of insiders that you're suggesting are excluding outsiders. If we're going to do anything under any plan, those town meeting members better figure out who the outsiders are in their neighborhoods and their social circles can be brought into the process. So I mean, I think, you know, the burden is really on town meeting, on people like you, you know, other members of the community who are the so-called insiders, that, what, 7,000 group of people who vote, you know, the ones who, you know, know that we're a town, not a city. You know, those are the people who need to just sort of reach out and bring other people in.
Well, I want to dispute that it's on, I want to dispute that it's on the shoulders of town meeting members exclusively.
Well, not just on the shoulders, you know, of course not.
It's a partnership, and I think town meeting members, many people are excited about some of this, but we are still bound by the lack of some resources that we could use. For example, precinct-specific listservs to help us share information out. That would be helpful as well, to help build the community engagement within our communities. And it could help us also then reinforce some of those messages. But it has to be a partnership, and I think that we're all in violent agreement that town meeting members are part of that partnership.
Yeah, I think that's where I was going with this. I agree that, again, I support this. And in addition, you know, if this were, I think about the sort of city of Boston, for instance, that has neighborhood representatives. And I was thinking, wouldn't it be great if we could have, I don't know, four representatives for, you know, overseeing four different precincts each and actually engaged in their hearing concerns from neighbors like Regina was, and not just about one issue, but about many different issues? That's not something we have right now. And then I thought, well, we do have 240 town meeting members. And I think, you know, we happen to be in a room, I'm counting, one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five. And I could say that each and every one of you does this, actually, is represents the community. I mean, Mariah brought us out to go see some issues impacting, you know, where the neighborhood you live in directly. I think everyone in this room has done that, reached out to community members. I don't know if we could say that for all 240, though. And so I wonder, as part of this, this is not a, it's not a question for right now, but as part of this larger conversation, what is the role in these 240 elected representatives in helping to facilitate dialogue between the town, all the department heads, that select board member Franco was talking about earlier, the departments, all these well-intentioned folks, and residents in the community? It seems to me there's this, like, huge body of folks that could get involved in this, and I'd like to see a lot more of that.
I went to the Jim Franco School of how to be a town meeting member. Seriously.
The Brookline Jim Franco, not the other one.
And what Jim makes you do is listen. And so by the time I was appointed, I had a sense of what the issues were in the neighborhood. And he was very keen to say, you know, "Write your number down." "All right, I'll write my number down for 100 people on a Saturday." But that's the job. And I think something that doesn't get communicated effectively is what the job is. And so, you know, the people in Precinct 1 that had been around for a while, they see it as being fixes. You know, and if they can't fix it, they tell you. And I don't know what the mechanism is to communicate that to all however many town meeting members there are. But I think that that's essential because some of the things that we've heard about today, they might not have been problems if there had been a, an assumption that your responsibility within the concept of community engagement is to solve problems and not to run from them.
Any more questions, comments? Okay, we're not going to be voting on this Warren Article either. We'll take it up sometime in the future for a vote. So, Ms. Park, I understand you want to make a comment. We had a comments section earlier, but-
Yes, sorry, I must have missed that.
You didn't come up, but I'll give you an opportunity to say your-
Okay, thank you. My name is Susan Park. I live in Precinct 2. And I just wanted to also show pictures from the rally that we had on Saturday. Thank you, Raoul and Heather for attending. Well, actually, we took about 25 people who attended. There were probably about 50, 60 at the highest peak. And we took about 25 people and had them line up. And they lined up to the edge of the window of the Pier 1 building. So I think the license calls for 90 to 100, and up to the edge of the building was 25. So, you know, we're wondering where the people are going to be standing. And that is why the three warrants that were issued for this special town meeting vote were asking for appointment only because with 25 people lined up, that only takes you to the edge of that blue awning. And I'm not sure if you could wrap around, wrap the people around down the alley. And then if there are more than 25 people, you would be by the property of Eureka and then Mathnazium. So that would be another reason, as Mr. Franco asked, why would we move to appointment only? And the other one would be restricted hours for basically the same reason. And then the third warrant article is having a study committee put in place, looking at the impact of, you know, like, the NEDA neighborhood. And I think just attending the community meeting on September 24th and just hearing, you know, just the outrage and the concerns of the people who live in the area, I mean, it's, I mean, empathy is being able to feel what someone else feels. And we don't have that yet, you know, in College Corner. So realistically, you know, empathy is you have to actually feel it. And I'm just saying- feel it. And I'm just saying, once it gets here, I can only sympathize with them, because empathy is if you experience it. But looking at this picture, and looking at the 25 and just having these lines all the time, I think that's -- I think that really is going to be problematic, just like what we're seeing in the NEDA neighbors. So that's why I came out tonight. I just wanted to show these pictures, and I do have something written up. I would just encourage you, the Honorable Select Board, to put the three warrant articles on the agenda soon. The petition includes three warrants, as I just said, to reduce hours, appointment only, and a moratorium on issuing the two remaining operating licenses until a study group can assess our current approach to high-volume retail cannabis in the context of our NEDA experience and the feedback from our community. So thank you once again for letting me speak. I just wanted to talk about information that you haven't heard yet. And it was interesting, Saturday, we had probably about 25 more signatures, and I'm still receiving signatures. In fact, there was a lady tonight that just signed also. And, yeah, at one point, we -- there were so many people there that we had to forge a path, and some people had to kind of walk around, and it got really tight, got uncomfortable. And Raoul and Heather were there, too. I think they saw what I'm talking about. So I think it would be great to just reassess and reconsider just the traffic it's going to cause. And according to, you know, the NEDA neighborhood, there's just -- there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of urine, there's a lot of litter, et cetera. I won't go into that. But it's, I feel like this, the path, the sidewalk here is more narrow than Trader Joe's, and we all saw that Saturday. So that's all I have. Thank you.
I'll say a couple of things. See, what was the first thing I was going to say? Oh, the special warrant article will be -- the special town meeting will be called. We have 90 days to do that, and we will have to figure out, you know, what's the appropriate time, given, you know, town meeting and all the other things going on. So we haven't figured that out yet. But, you know, it's not a question of, should we put it on? It will be called, or the town meeting would be called. The other thing, just a personal observation, I'm very sensitive to the messaging I hear from people all over in all contexts. I see here on the first page, a sign that says, "Do not shabbify Brookline." Ooh, that sounds like, you know, code words, and please be careful with your messaging. Shabbify. Shabbify. Make shabby. Okay? I picked up on that. I think other people will pick up on that. It's messaging like that, and, you know, outsiders, you know, shady people, and some other, you know, messaging that I hear from people who are opposed to the cannabis stores. I think I'm going to call it out, because it's actually very dangerous. It's really saying that it's us and our nice little white town versus these outsiders who are coming in, making it shabby, and making it, you know, not what we want it to be.
Okay.
It's not directed at you, it's just saying that be careful of the messaging.
Right. And I want to thank you for your feedback. I want to thank you for that. And that is why I just want to close by reiterating that we are concerned citizens of Coolidge Corner. We care about the three warrant articles, which would help all pot shops throughout Brookline, and that would be to reduce hours, to have appointment only, and to have a study committee to reassess how other neighborhoods are impacted. So that's -- but I appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
I just wanted to reiterate some of those points. I did talk to some folks on Saturday who couldn't -- someone said, "I feel unsafe walking down Commonwealth Avenue," and what I want to -- I'm sorry, Beacon Street. And what I want to remind folks about is that the people that are showing up at these shops are the ones that are procuring marijuana the legal way. Marijuana is still readily available, you'd be surprised to know, outside of legal, you know? Yes, shocked, there is gambling in this establishment. And so these are the folks that have actually shown up to actually purchase this the legal way. And I also, when I hear those things, and people say, "I won't feel safe walking down Beacon Street," I start to think some of the same things. Of course, you know, when you start a movement, you can't be responsible for everything that every person has said in there, but I think that there are those elements. The other piece that I think we discussed earlier, and I'm not sure if you heard for this part, is the enforcement piece. And I'd like to see, you know, we have an opportunity here to see if the enforcement before town meeting votes -- and by the way, we don't know that town meeting will vote for anything that are in those -- listed in those three warrant articles, but we know that it's our responsibility to actually enforce the laws that we have -- that we've long written for this town. And so we have an opportunity now to see if this enforcement actually makes a difference, at least in the NEDA neighborhood, and what lessons we might learn for the Coolidge Corner neighborhood.
Any other questions, comments? Oh, this is just public comments. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good night.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, finally, boards and commissions, appointments. You have some people for us to--
Sure. Yes, Mr. Chair, we have a recommendation from the Arts Commission for the Arts, and that involves appointing two new members and reappointing four new members. So I'm just going to go down the roll. For new members, Caroline Bowden.
Yes.
Hi.
Stan Trecker.
Hi.
And for reappointments, Ilana LaScoye.
Hi.
Daniel Gosten.
Hi.
Donna Hollenberg.
Hi.
Courtney McGlynn.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes our meeting for tonight. It's been real, Paul.